August 9th, City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Reverend Dr. Michael Wesley, Senior Pastor, Great Old Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor LaShonda Scales from District 1. Please stand.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, our Father, we come this morning on the basis of our relationship with your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, and we're so thankful and grateful for the gift of life, and we're grateful for the privilege of this day. And Father, we lift up this council before your throne and all of the elected officials who serve our city. And we pray now for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We pray for understanding to know what to do. We pray for knowledge to know the times that we're living in. And we pray for wisdom to use the knowledge and abilities that you've given each one to use in the right way. We pray for the business at hand for this day. We pray for a spirit of unity, and we pray for the bond of peace. We ask your blessing upon the business of this city and all of its citizens. Keep us strong and keep us in your care. In the name of your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
So, the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abbott. President Pro Tim Hoyt. Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Parker.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present, thank you. The, uh... Do we have a motion on the minutes from April 12th, 19th, and 26th, 2016?
Some of.
Sorry.
Abbott, Robertson.
Okay, voting should be open. Now. How would you like to vote, Councilmember Lundey and Hoyt, for the minutes?
Some of, I mean, yes.
Councilmember Rafferty, Robertson, Scales, and Tyson. Thank you. That vote should be up.
Um, that item passes.
Uh, the minutes are not rated for May 3rd through August 2nd, 2016. Let's move with the consideration of the consent agenda, please.
Okay, the consent agenda starts on page 2 with items 2, 3, and 4. Page 3, we have items 5 and 6 on consent. Let me skip over to page 19. There are no items on 19. Next would be page 24. Items 23, 24, 25, and 26 are on consent. Page 25, items 28, 29, 30, and 31 are on consent. Page 26, items 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37 are on consent. Page 27, we have items 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43 on consent. Page 28, we have items 44, 45, 46, 47, and 48 designated as consent items. On page 29, we have items 49, 50, 51, 52, and 53 on consent. Page 30, we have items 54, 55, 56, 57, and 58 on consent. Page 31, items 59, 60, 61, 62, and 63 are on consent. Page 32, items 64, 65, 66, 67, and 68 are on consent. And on page 33, we have items 69, 70, and 71 on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott.
Yes, I have several items I'd like to place on consent. The first is on page 18, item 7.
Okay.
Page 18, item 7. Did you say object?
No.
Page 18.
It's a lot of paper.
What's the item? Page 18, item 7.
Page 18, item 7, okay.
Then on page 19, items 8, 9, and 10.
Okay. 19.
19. Then on page 20.
Paper copies of page 19.
Okay, well, I, on page, my page 20 on the iPad is items 11, 12, 13. Then on page 21, 14, 15, and 16. Then on page 22, item 18. Oh, wait, take, never mind on 18. It's got some mistakes in it. Um, item, on, item 19.
Excuse me, Counsel, did you call 16? It should be withdrawn, I'm sorry.
16 is withdrawn.
It should be, yes ma'am.
All right.
Okay. So, item... Let me excuse me, I, uh, page 25 on the iPad. Item 27, which actually is not labeled on that page as 27, but anyway. Item 27.
You said, item...
Why is it on the agenda anyway?
Well, it's been objected to, so I won't ask for it to be put on consent. Then on page 33. Page 33 on the iPad, item 69, I would like to have it removed.
69?
Yes.
Okay.
Page 33.
Item 69, okay.
Item 69. Remove from consent. Then on page 35, item 78.
You want to remove that from consent?
Uh, put on consent because it's not on consent now.
Object to that.
And that's all.
All right, do we have, uh, any other? Counselor Rafferty?
Did you place item 19 on the consent agenda?
No. I didn't.
I just wanted to make sure.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more?
No, thank you.
All right, are there any others?
Actually, sir, if I may.
Counselor Rafferty?
Thank you. Um, on page 34, items 73, 74, 75, 76, and 77?
I object.
Thank you.
Because there was no backup on the iPad. I have no idea it was on the pile of paper, but there was no backup whatsoever on the iPad.
Mr. President, I just got, uh, information from Mr. Tracy Roberts that the iPad didn't load the attachments for that, but they were in your hard copy. They should have loaded up. I don't, I can't explain them, so... But they are in your hard copy.
Well, some of us don't use paper.
My apologies, Counsel.
Okay. Just pass it to me when you get done with it, Counselor Abbott.
My name is...
Yeah, no. Um, are you done, Counsel Rafferty?
Yes, sir.
Do we go back to which ones?
They're not going to be on consent.
Okay, 73, 74, 75, 76, or 77. Okay.
Counsel, uh, Scales?
Mr. President, page 22, item 18. Also, page 22, item number 19.
I object to 18.
I object to both.
Okay.
Okay. Do you object to 18?
They object to both of them.
They object to both? Okay. I have one more, Mr. President. Let me locate it, and then I will put my name back up, please.
Okay. Are there any other members who wish to speak to consent agenda? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium.
Mr. President, there is one item that was on consent that I need to have removed from consent, so just please bear with me just a moment.
Mr. President. Um, I have a few other items I'd like to add to consent now that I've seen them.
Okay.
Items on page 34. Items 73, 74, 75, and 76.
Mr. President.
Those are the employee travel.
Can you tell us what they, what they're doing? Since you have it. Who they are and what, what they're doing.
Oh, Lord, that'll take forever.
Mr. President.
Yes.
On the one that's dealing with 75, we need to strike Mr. Kevin Moore from that particular item.
Okay. 73, 74, 75, 76, and 77.
On your paper copy, 75, Mr. Kevin Moore should be taken out of that item.
Okay, strike Kevin Moore. And 71, that's, that's being removed from consent as well. All right, do we have a mover and a second on the consent agenda?
I love approval.
Oh, you, sorry, did you have, which item?
Good morning, Counsel. To the administrative staff, my name is Simpson Berry. I'm a member of Belton AME Church in the Rising Ballpark area. I'm speaking on the consent, item 48.
Okay. Uh, item 48, okay, what we'll do, we'll remove that one from consent.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? All right, do we have a mover and a second, Counsel Scales?
Yes, wasn't there a question about item 29, page 25 on yesterday?
What page, what item, what now?
Item 29, page 25.
Um... Did you want to take that off consent?
Well, we can, but I, what I'm saying is, to my recollection, wasn't there some kind of discussion that was, that was had about that? So are we leaving it on or off?
Now, that was about the people that are going to help with Love Your Block. That was in the budget discussion.
I understand that nothing came, became of the budget discussion, so I'm just trying to see, Mr. Chair, is that something that we're moving forward with, or we're waiting for all of that to go ahead and be approved?
Yes, ma'am, um, Counselor Scales, um, this is, um, a resolution in the rear. Uh, we're talking last night about the proposed budget.
Oh, okay.
And where that money was allocated through the Birmingham Urban League because the federal funding had been shifted and lifted, and we were trying to replace federal funds according to the mayor's office on what had been removed from that item to keep that project going in the next, in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
So, this being in the rear, that's being proposed going forward.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. So, 29 and 30, with that information, can remain on consent, please.
Okay. Do we have a mover and a second on the consent agenda?
Move approval?
Second.
Abbott, Robertson, ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. Okay.
All right, voting should be open.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. You should be, Counselor Lundey and Hoyt should be in, uh... Do I need to send Mr.?
All right.
Okay.
That item passes. Um, next item, Mr. Clerk, call up item 17.
Item 17?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, it was noted, Mr. President, with the changes, that this should be a first reading again from the Law Department. Item 17, an ordinance to amend Title II, General Government, Chapter 1, Section 15, ordinances, resolutions, motions, and contracts of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980 by amendment, Section 15, to give further guidance on action by the council, taking on items introduced on the council agenda.
Second.
Counselor Member Abbott. This is for UC, for the item. This is the first reading again.
The first reading again?
Well, they said they had changes, and, um, the Law Department said, because of the changes, an item of permanent operation needs to be a first reading again.
Well, let me just, before we do that, Mr. Clerk, the only change that was made was put in the rest of the city code and show where it was being changed. There was no substantial changes at all. So what are they talking about? I can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Because of what you submitted the first time, the public wasn't given any notice of what the changes to the entire ordinance are, and there was a hugely substantial change to correct it.
Which was what?
What you submitted before was a ordinance to adopt the part D. That's what you submitted. Now, you're submitting the entire ordinance all over again. That's a substantial change.
What we submitted originally, Mr. Bentley, was the section in the code that we wanted to change. And now what you're saying, what, what you all have requested the council to do is...
It would have been very good if you had asked us to draft it. We would have drafted it correctly. What you submit, what you submitted was change the entire ordinance to include nothing but subsection D. That, that was the effect of what was drafted and put before the council and put before the public. Now what you have is the change that you have made in the rest of the ordinance. That's, that's a substantial difference.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Counselmember Abbott, this is for UC.
This is just for the first reading.
For the first reading.
No.
Okay, well, that fails.
Well, I still need to get the record, Mr. President. Pro Tim Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselmember Lundey.
Yes.
Counselmember Rafferty.
No.
Counselmember Robertson.
No.
Counselmember Parker. Counselmember Scales.
Yes.
Counselmember Tyson. President Austin.
Yes. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, um, the next item. Let me see, Mr. Clerk. Item 16 has been withdrawn. Um, item 18.
Item 18, an ordinance that the governing body of the City of Birmingham is authorizing, Bainbridge, Mims, Rogers, and Smith, LLP, such co-council that they deem necessary to the challenging the legality of Act Number 164 slash 276 on behalf of the City of Birmingham, the City Council, and authorize the Mayor of the City of Birmingham to execute the contract.
Now, a mover and a second?
This is an ordinance.
Hoyt, Tyson.
Um... The Law Department, it says it should be a resolution.
Mr. President.
Do we have a mover and a second?
We already did that.
We got that.
Hoyt and Tyson. Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, uh, the version of this contract that was in the iPad, which we seem to have two separate things, this thing's all messed up. It's still got Sirodi and Perma's name in it. It's got, it says we're going to hire him to do the Water Works case and any other cases. It, the wording in it is all, it's, it's wrong. So, do we have a correct contract? Anywhere?
This, Ms. Key, she's not...
Good morning, Counselors. There is a corrected, um, contract that Tracy Roberts submitted, and it is forthcoming here.
So, let's table it.
Yeah, let's table it until we can read it.
Okay. Counselor, was also a, uh, suggested resolution to replace that ordinance?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
Just do substitute on that.
Yeah, it is supposed to be substituted, yes. But we're, let's table until we get everybody a copy of the new one.
Mr. President.
Move the table.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right.
So, at the time of, of, Mr. President, uh, now that...
We'll do a talk about it then.
Okay, I mean, 'cause I, I could tell folks was just going on about their business, but they weren't going to stop me from asking whatever I want to know.
Yeah, we're going to take it back. We're going to talk about it.
All right, you got it?
All right, next item, Mr. Clerk, 19.
19. Item 19. A resolution directing Mayor William A. Bell, Senior, to authorize staff to prepare and certify the budget ordinances recommended by the council for approval at the August 9th, 2016 City Council meeting. A timely response is requested stipulated in Section 45 dash 37-8, that's 52.95 of the Code of Alabama, 1975.
Move aye, second.
Do you have any speakers? Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, what are we doing here?
You're at the resolution?
Yeah.
We're asking that the mayor present the item as we submitted, the budget, on June the 23rd. Present those ordinances, budget resolutions, budget ordinances, to the council so we can vote on them.
You mean the ones we previously did before we met with the mayor last night?
Yes. The ones that we submitted on June the 23rd. Only change that the mayor presented to us last night was, uh, he added $5.4 million to the budget and made a few changes in the budget. I don't have it in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly specific line items. I think it was 1.8 million for the 50 police officers. Um, there was a few other item, line items that he changed, but it was approximately, it was, I think it was actually $5.6 million.
Okay, but he also provided us the reasons that we should not cut all of that money from the different departments, so... After reading the reasons that that money was put in the budget, then our proposal is not what it needs to be.
Do you want me to respond to it?
Well, I'm trying to, I thought, I guess I misunderstood where we were last night at the meeting because the explanations that I read told me that the council should not be cutting all that money out of the police and fire departments and other places because there was a valid reason for the money to be in there. But this resolution says that we just want what we voted on previously when we didn't know what the money was for. Which is illogical.
Well, in actuality, Counsel Abbott, uh, one of the reasons that you're saying is valid, um, that was given to us last night was, uh, weed and seed, for example. And if you recall, they said that we completely cut out weed and seed program. But if you looked at the expenses in the line item, the line item was, I think, $125,000. Uh, the weed and seed expenses totaled about $33,600, and the expenses were for catering and, um, and copying.
Well, weed and seed is not a big deal to me, but the thing, the money in the, in the police department, the fire department, there was some significant money. The legal department, or law department, as we call it here, um, we were taking out the funds to pay attorneys, but then last week, we wanted them to pay our attorneys out of the money that we were cutting. So, I agree, I mean, there were a few things on there that I could cut out completely and not be concerned about, but, you know, weed and seed was such a minor amount of money compared to the full amount that we were cutting, proposing to cut out.
Well, I, I think the, the other thing is that when you mentioned the fire department, again, the amount of money that we cut was, we cut them back to fiscal year 2016's expenditures. Uh, so, the administration, the mayor was asking us to increase the amount from last year to this year when we wanted to just keep them at level funding. So, to say that we cut them is not, is, we just basically kept them at level funding. That is consistent with the fire department, with the police department, uh, with the fuel expenses, and all the other things that we would, that was, that had been stated that we had brought them down to zero. Um, but in actuality, that is not the case. And I have the document, I think I shared it with you last night, about what we actually did in those different line items. And as a matter of fact, what, what the mayor passed out to us last night showed the, the actual expenses and what was actually cut. And I can go down that list, I just didn't bring it up here today.
Well, I mean, I read the list, and my only concern is the council, the, the committee chairman and the mayor, and I guess all of us, agreed to get together and discuss the budget further. So I'm just, I thought we would put this off another week rather than trying to vote it back over again now that we know what we know.
That's fine with me. You want to make a motion to delay it?
I, I move that we delay a week.
My name is up, Mr. President.
Okay.
Okay, well, then I, I withdraw that.
All right, you, you done, you still got some time.
No, I'm fine. I don't have to keep talking.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I didn't say anything last night during our Budget and Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, but I was in tune and listened to everything that was said. Uh, it was a presentation of, uh, some budgetary items that the mayor thought were needed to be funded to help continue city operations and government operations to support the citizens of this community. Uh, there was a $5.4 million surplus to be utilized for other areas to support efforts as it relates to citizens and government being operative during, uh, the next budget cycle. But I also do remember that, uh, the chairman of this committee, Counsel Lundey, stated very eloquently that let's forget the, uh, problems that we've had and get past the impasses to make sure that we sit down with the mayor to make sure we can finalize our budget. So, that being said, I think that's what is best to help approach this process. I do think, uh, uh, there's a willingness to sit at the table to discuss what's needed for the best for our citizens and government here in the City of Birmingham. Uh, the mayor was present last night and stated that he was present to address that and would be willing to meet with any council member. So, I mean, I think we put the cart before the horse with this item, uh, Mr. President, and, and at this bypass that we're going through right now that's being presented, there's an opportunity to sit down and get through the impasse. And so I think it's a opportune time for us to sit down with our mayor to finalize these details so we can move forward to fiscal budget, uh, for 2016, 17. I do think it's appropriate, uh, Counsel Abbott, that there, there's some type of delay on this item till we sit down with our mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Rabbit.
She, he got it, I got it.
Thank you, and, um, I have to, I'm in a concurrence with, um, Counsel Roberson and Counsel Abbott that this item be delayed, because, um, the council did present a document to the mayor, the mayor has now answered that document, and we need to sit down and talk about it. There's a lot of conflicts between what the administration and the council proposed. And what I would ask for an opportunity to sit down to review both sides of the story so we can weigh this to the benefit of the city and the benefit of our constituents. Thank you.
Counsel Skills.
Thank you, Ms. President. Well, let me just say this, I find it very interesting, some of the comments that I'm hearing, 'cause from some of these folk who are talking, they didn't even show up to a budget workshop, so had they shown up to the budget workshops, they would know exactly what's in the budget. So, you know, I'm, I'm ready for us to go ahead and vote accordingly for those who did think enough of the budget workshops, since we say we're concerned about citizens and we're concerned about police and fire and those who help us to serve the citizens, then you should have cared enough to adjust your schedules accordingly and show up for the budget workshops. We had four, and you can decide which four you attended. The mayor didn't attend any, and some of the rest of you all that are talking didn't attend any either. So had you come, you would know. And I will say this, uh, Mr. President, 'cause I'm gonna try my very best today to not say how I really feel about some things, uh, is that I think it's a shame when you have council members who show up to work, and then we try to play these games out here on the dais. It's very unfortunate. Uh, budget workshops are open to the public, if you wanna come, you all are more than welcome to come, but I can say this, the mayor cannot meet with five members of this council and it be against the Sunshine Act. That means that, that whatever our subsequent meeting has to be, it gotta be before the public. I wish the public would explore what, what it is that we're voting on. And matter of fact, that was the reason why, Ms. President, that we had these budget tours anyway, to talk about what was in the budget. And then some of the folk, same folk who were talking this morning didn't even show up for that. So if members of the public came to the meetings that we had for these budget workshop tours, it was discussed, what the mayor proposed, what the council proposed, and we advertised the dates. Some council members didn't even show up. So, that's what I don't, I, I really don't understand this, and, uh, Mr. President, I'm, I'm gonna be done and, and, uh, that you all do what you need to do, but I, I, I just think that we're playing, we're playing some games at the expenses of, of some folk that we all said we care about, and I don't know why we keep delaying and keep delaying every year, with the exception of what, two thousand and fourteen, I think, when you originally became the president. We've been late every year with this budget, every year. I don't get it. That's why we need to talk more throughout the year, so when you get to this impasse, as we call it, then you would be able to vote and have a active budget July one. So I don't know if we do this for TV sake or whatever this stuff is, but that's just not the way you do business, Ms. President. And I think that when folk see us acting accordingly as leaders of the city and we doing things in a timely manner, then they're gonna respect that. But they can't respect when we seem disorderly and don't have it together. Now, you know, again, the council members can choose to vote however they want to, Ms. President, but I'm ready to vote it up or down.
Mr. Protem.
Yeah, well, and, and I think, um, Counsel Skills has eloquently dictated my concerns about a council who has not participated in the budget process, and yet you got everything to say this morning, and you had nothing to say when we were going through this process, and we sit down for hours on hours, and, I mean, not, uh, not an inkling of him showing up, you know, as if you'd unchecked out, and now you're checking back in. Uh, that, you know, something is, is strangely wrong with that, perhaps to the height of folly. And to come here and grandstand, you know, as if you're so attuned to the budget and you're not, is, uh, beyond me, quite frankly. It's beyond me. And, uh, but I want you all to know that he has not participated, not one iota. And if he has, he's been in asylum, he's been by himself, but he has not participated in this process, and it's just, you know, it's disingenuine to do so and try to suggest...
I'm talking to you.
Yes, so, uh, and I didn't call no name.
No.
Okay, I'm being respectful.
You are known one of the...
Well, I know that, but I'm just, you know, somebody, you know, he said what he said, and I just want the public to know, did not show up, and I don't know what it is, but you know, I would be concerned if somebody represented me and didn't show up and participate in a process that's so, um, so important to, to the, uh, the operations of this city. That's all I'm saying.
All right, so we, Counsel Abbott, you have a one-week delay. Did you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would like to move for a one-week delay so that we can get back together with the mayor.
Second.
Abbott, Roberson. Ready to vote on a one-week delay, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Voting should be up.
Mr. President, I have a question to the, to the motion. And so, if this item fails, then we'll take back up the main motion.
Before a one-week delay, then we'll, yeah, if we don't, if the delay doesn't pass, then we'll go back to the main one.
Okay.
And just a point of clarity, Mr. President, while we need to clarify this vote, I'm inclined to, to delay, uh, because we did say, the chairman did say he wanted to meet with the mayor, and quite frankly, um, this was a holdover from the last meeting, meeting, and we didn't know if the mayor would show up Monday or not, and so, it's automatic, we don't know that, you know, and so, to the latest item, uh, only suggests that he did show up.
Yep.
And that he has offered, uh, a different view of the budget than what we initially had to consider. So I just wanna say that, um, and so, I'm, I'm inclined to, to delay it a week, uh, so we can get that understanding.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
So my question being, before we take this vote, uh, since the mayor is present, Mr. Mayor, are you agreeing to meet before next Tuesday?
I stayed last week, and I told council that I would meet, and so I said I would meet Friday, and the council members said they want to meet Monday. I said I would meet Monday, and, uh, I would meet, uh, prior to next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you, sir, that's all I needed to know, just nothing like understanding. Thank you, Ms. President.
Ready to vote.
Counsel Ramtin. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes for a one-week delay. Call up item twenty.
Item twenty. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a project agreement with Alabama Land Holdings LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, under which the city will, among other things, convey to Alabama Land Holdings LLC or use a value of one dollar certain real property aggregating approximately thirty acres in consideration of Alabama Holdings LLC expanding its operations. By acquiring and developing a parcel of real property aggregating approximately forty-eight point fifty-seven acres located within a portion of the city of Center Point, Alabama that borders the property, together with two facilities aggregating approximately one million square feet situated thereon, and commonly known as Metalcraft Facilities, and installing and equipment certain items of machinery, equipment, furniture, fixtures, and other personal property at the facilities necessary for certain manufacturing operations therein, including without limitation, the production of vehicle-related products, and using its best efforts to request that existing suppliers consider relocation to the Valley East Industrial Park. Uh, note, Mr. President, this was also approved by Economic Development Budget and Finance.
Move.
Mr. President? Oh, I move approval, Mr. President.
Second.
Abbott, Skills, Counsel Abbott?
Yes, um, I just had one question that I forgot to ask yesterday, and that was about the appraised value of this property. I'm sure we had an appraisal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. It, this, we need you see on that.
Yeah, that's right.
Counsel Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counsel Protem Hoyt. He's out. Counsel Member Lundie.
Yes.
Counsel Member Par, uh, Refery. Counsel Member Roberson. Counsel Member Parker.
Yes.
Counsel Member Skills.
Yes.
Counsel Member Tyson, President Austin.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Now we need the motion to get it before, still.
Go ahead and do another motion.
Yes, I move approval.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Abbott?
Okay, now, do we have an appraisal?
Griffin Lassiter, Senior Project Manager, Economic Development. Yes, ma'am, it was appraised at fifteen thousand dollars an acre, oh, probably four years ago. So a total of, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if the project does not come through, the law department has done a great job of, of protecting our interest, and we would get our money back or the property back.
Oh, okay, okay, well, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Ready to vote?
Okay. That vote should be up.
That item passes. Um, next item, item twenty-one, Mr. Clerk.
Item twenty-one, an order granting a franchise to the Water Works Board of City of Birmingham, a period of thirty years to acquire, own, maintain, construct, and enlarge a water system with the city of Birmingham, and to lay, construct, and maintain pipes, mains, and other, uh, con, conductors, fixtures, and related buttresses along crosses on under city streets for the purpose of conveying and distributing water in and through the city of Birmingham, and to repair, renew, and relay and extend such pipes, mains, conductors, fixtures, and related buttresses, and to make all excavations necessary therefore, and the Water Works Board of the city of Birmingham will pay to the city an annual franchise fee equal to three percent of gross receipts collected within the corporate limits of the city and only one, and one-half percent of gross receipts collected within the city's police jurisdiction. We need you see as well on this item. Counsel Member Abbott.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
We need you to see.
Aye.
Counsel Protem Hoyt. Counsel Member Lundie.
Yes.
Counsel Member Refery.
Yes.
Counsel Member Roberson.
Okay, yeah.
Counsel Member Parker.
Yes.
Counsel Member Skills.
Yes.
Counsel Member Tyson. And President Austin.
Yes.
Now, motion on that item.
Yes.
I miss you?
Yes.
I'm sorry. We need a motion on the actual item, Mr. ...
Who's item?
Second.
Roberson, Abbott. Counsel Roberson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, do appreciate the, uh, council considering this item as it relates to a franchise agreement for, uh, the Birmingham Water Works and the city of Birmingham. Uh, it was presented to the mayor and his administration for consideration and review, and to the law department. Uh, this did go through the committee process, and was presented, uh, by, uh, the Birmingham Water Works to the committee. Uh, this is something that has not been done since nineteen eighty-one. Uh, each council member should have received a packet of information on yesterday as it relates to, uh, the request for the city of Birmingham to have a thirty-year franchise agreement. Uh, there was a PowerPoint presentation and also a red line, uh, agreement, uh, franchise agreement for your review and consideration. Uh, this is the standard. Um, other municipalities that are in the area, uh, have franchise agreements with, uh, the Birmingham Water Works, um, and they are fixed in for thirty years. This is a revenue generator for each, uh, city and each municipality. Uh, the Birmingham Water Works has honored this item, uh, this franchise agreement without a franchise agreement in place. Uh, we've received up to one point nine billion dollars in revenue, uh, if not more, over the past five years. So, that's why we're here today. Uh, this is an agreement between the Water Works, that they can go in and do excavation of streets.
She asked me that, okay.
Uh, that they can go and restore paved streets, uh, they can do construction and maintenance of pipes and fixtures, uh, to help support, uh, the system that supports the city of Birmingham, uh, and the ratepayers and the citizens, and, uh, this is a three percent franchise fee based on total revenue collected, and one point five percent of revenue collected would go back, uh, to the Birmingham, city of Birmingham. So, uh, that was, Mr. President, was presented in a committee meeting, the utilities committee meeting, and, uh, recommend to the full council for consideration today. We do have representation from the Birmingham Water Works here, if anybody had, like to ask any questions, to speak to the side. Thank you.
Counsel Refery?
Actually, I was gonna commend the chair of this committee for taking this action, because when I took over transportation in two thousand and ten, we had this exact same issue with a lot of our franchise agreements having been expired. We actually have one contract that's still expired since nineteen ninety-eight, and that's the Magnolia Parking Deck Agreement. So, um, it, it takes a lot of effort to move the administration to keep all of these, uh, agreements current, and I just wanted to commend you for making that effort.
Thank you, Counsel. Mr. Protem.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a little lost, because I don't understand how we have a franchise agreement with something that we own. We the franchisee. So why we got some agreement with, uh, an entity that we own? That makes no sense to me. And I'm, you know, I, obviously, there's not been thought out, and, and, and quite frankly, I've never seen this, and, um, but I'm not inclined to, to, um, vote for something that we already own. I can understand the outside, the outline areas, because this is our water. And perhaps you do need to have a, an agreement with, uh, with these other municipalities and, and, uh, areas outside of, uh, of Birmingham, but not Birmingham have a contract with yourself. You know, un, unless we had, had a divorce, you know, we still married. And right now, you know, we might be separated, but we're not divorced, because if we can get enough money, we can buy it back, is that right? We can float enough bonds, we can do it, couldn't we? Yeah, so, I'm just not, it's, it, you know, it, it looks wrong, and I'm ad, I would imagine that this, this marriage needs some counseling, but I'm not voting for this, because it, uh, it stinks to the high heavens. And I don't even know who came up with this idea. I'm not voting for it.
Counselor, um, Skills?
Thank you, Ms. President. Well, let me just say this as re, relates to, uh, a franchise agreement. Is Birmingham the only participant in this kind of agreement?
You want me to answer that for you?
I love it.
Ms. President, can I speak? Uh, thank you. We are not, uh, the only one. I think there's approximately, there was a list provided in your packet that was provided to each council member yesterday for your review. City of Adamsville has a thirty-year agreement, Center Point has a thirty-year agreement, City of Clay has a thirty-year agreement, uh, City of Fultondale has a thirty-year agreement, City of Gardendale has a thirty-year agreement, the City of Homewood has a thirty-year agreement, City of Hoover has a thirty-year agreement, uh, City of Irondale has a thirty-year agreement, Town of Kimberly has a thirty-year agreement, City of Leeds has a thirty-year agreement, City of Morris has a thirty-year agreement, City of Mountain Brook has a thirty-year agreement, City of Pinson has a mount, uh, fifteen-year agreement, City of Tarrant has a thirty-year agreement, Town of Trafford has thirty-year agreement, City of Trussville has a thirty-year agreement, City of Vestavia has a thirty-year agreement, and the City of Warrior has a thirty-year agreement. Uh, as stated early in my, uh, comments, uh, the last time this was adopted and approved by the city, I think it was in nineteen eighty-one, and there was an agreement from November twenty-seventh, nineteen fifty-one, to, I think, January nineteen eighty-one, so we have not, for, for, it could be political reasons, for other reasons, had a franchise agreement with the city of Birmingham, but all other surrounding municipalities has a franchise agreement.
So, let me, let me ask you this, uh, and I, I see Mr. Underwood is here, which I'm not gonna put you on the spot, I'm going back to the chair of the committee. Um, so my, my question would be, to what advantage does this franchise agreement bring to the city of Birmingham, Mr. Chair?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Skills. Uh, as it relates to the agreement, there's a three percent, uh, revenue that's generated to help support, uh, the city of Birmingham's coffers, uh, and Mr. Underwood explained to me in the committee meeting that they've honored this, uh, revenue, a check being given to the city of Birmingham for the past five years. I think as of last year, well, this year, two thousand and... for the past five years. I think as of last year, well, this year, two thousand and sixteen, uh, it was two point, I mean, one point nine million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Underwood, that was presented to the City of Birmingham. So this is additional revenue, uh, for our city.
Okay, so, Mr. President, then let me, uh, say this, um, because it would be wonderful had the Chair brought this information before today. I'm, I'm still, uh, um, at, at a, at a place we currently are in litigation with the Water Works as we speak. I, I'm trying to figure out how do we do, and I don't wanna say too much from the days, but how are we doing one with another pending? I, I don't, that part I really don't get. 'Cause we got an item on the agenda today dealing with that, so that just, that don't kinda sound right. So I'mma, I'mma leave that alone. Uh, you can't be in litigation and cutting a deal at the same time. And you shaking your head, bless your heart, we agreed today, didn't we?
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't?
Counsel Scales.
All right, I'm through with it, but you shook your head in the affirmative, so I, I didn't know. All right, okay, Mr. President.
Mr. Pres- Mr. Uh, Mr. President, um, I'd like to refer this to the Committee to hold further discussion.
Mr. President.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second, Counsel.
Speak to motion, Mr. President.
Yeah, Counselor, well, Counsel Rafferty's name is up. Do you actually wanna speak to the motion, too?
Actually, my name was up before the motion was made, so no, my comment was not to the motion. I can expound on the motion, but I'd like to finish, I'd like to, the right to comment.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, but go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the comment was made concern, or questioning, um, about franchising agreements with entities we own. We have a contract of agreement with the BJCTA. We are fifty percent owner of the BJCTA. We also have a franchise agreement with the Airport Authority, of which the city owns the airport. And that agreement was struck, um, actually, it was ahead of time. The original agreement was a fifty-year contract that the city and the airport reached a franchise agreement in nineteen eighty-four, and then, for whatever reason, all of a sudden, in two thousand and eight, this council voted to extend that franchise agreement an additional fifty years. Some of the council was present at that time. So, for historical reasons, I'm bringing this information back, that there is a precedent of creating, um, an agreement of how the city in, um, interacts with its, the, the entity that manages the asset of the city. So I wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
All right, um, Counsel Roberson, you wanna speak to the motion?
Yeah, I wanna speak to the motion, Mr. President. There are some pressing matters that relates to, uh, some bond negotiations uh, that will help support the efforts of the Birmingham Water Works. And if it's permissible, I'd like to, uh, hear from Mr. Underwood to explain why. And that's to the motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Underwood, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, council members, mayor's office. The Water Works is really a separate legal entity from the Birmingham City Council and the Birmingham City itself. Uh, therefore, we are required by state code and state law to have a separate franchise agreement with the municipalities we serve. It simply gives us the right to be in the right way to provide the water services that we provide, and I believe that you have a franchise agreement with most of the other utilities that provide services in the City of Birmingham. Now, the issue that's, uh, really at hand is we're in the process of refinancing four hundred and fifty-six million dollars of our debt. That refinancing issue is going to save us sixty-six million dollars, three million dollars a year, uh, for the next twenty-plus years. It's important that we get this approved at this point in time. We are going to talk with the rating agencies tomorrow. We're going to talk with, uh, we're gonna start the bond issuance process on the twenty-third. So it's important that we have in our documentation that we have a franchise agreement with the largest municipality that we serve. And Counselor Roberson is, uh, absolutely correct. We have twenty-one municipalities that we serve. Right now, we have nineteen franchise agreements approved. Uh, the City of Birmingham is one that's not approved. Small County, County Line City is not approved. So this will really help us on our bond issue, and it will help us save sixty-six million dollars here in the next couple of weeks on the refinancing. So that's why we came to you at this time and asked the, uh, Utilities Committee to approve it and move it forward to the full council.
All right, Counselor Abbott.
Well, actually, Mr. Underwood just said what I was going to say. I mean, we, we learned this in committee because I've been on the council fourteen and a half years, and we haven't ever had a franchise agreement come before us. But there's lots of things in the state constitution that we don't know about, this being one of them. And, uh, when, when they talked about the refinancing, I'm all for saving sixty-six million dollars, especially since, even though the Water Works is a separate entity, you know, I still consider it to belong to the Bur- the City of Birmingham. That may be wrong, but I still think of it that way. So, um, so basically, we're giving them the right to dig up our streets and our rights of way, and they're gonna pay us to allow them to do that. So it's, you know, it's like Bright House and all the other people that are in our, our rights of way. So that was all. Thank you.
And let me, let me add this, too. I think when we brought this to the Utilities Committee, we also talked to the mayor's office, we talked to, uh, the Law Department, and we talked to engineering. We wanted to make sure that the council knew that everything that we're supposed to do, we do, and we do on a timely basis. Uh, we paid the franchise fees for the last fifty-plus years, just like we're supposed to, even though we didn't have an agreement, but we've been paying those. We work with the Engineering Department on every, uh, repair and project that we do. Uh, we have them at the committee meeting, and all of them said that we do a good job in what we do. So there's a good relationship there. We just need to have this agreement approved, and it will help us on our bond issue. If not, we have to go in our bond document and declare that we don't have a franchise agreement with the largest municipality that we serve. So we'd like to be able to go in and say, we have franchise agreements with all but one, which is a minor portion of what we serve. I bet County Line in two thousand customers. It's up in the Trafford area. So we will be able to go to the bond people tomorrow and talk to them about us having franchise agreements with all the municipalities we serve. We know it takes another reading, we'll be able to explain that to them, and we think that will help us in our position refinancing these bonds.
Mr. President.
Counselor Scales.
Mr. President, and so, again, I'm gonna make this comment, uh, 'cause it has nothing to do with Mr. Underwood. I think he's a fine gentleman. I, I don't have a problem with, uh, what he does at the Water Works. Um, so, I'm getting ready to talk to my colleagues, Mr. Underwood, okay? My main question is this, and I don't like being pressured into decisions. I, that my first term, I didn't like that. Uh, when we talk about time sensitivity, I guess then I will ask you this one question then, Mr. Underwood. Did the committee know you were going to have to speak to, to the folk you need to talk to tomorrow?
Yes, we disclosed a timeline to them.
How long ago was that?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday.
Yeah, we, let me, let me say this. We have been operating without a franchise agreement, like, uh, Counsel said, for a long time. And we've been operating along that line. Uh, we have a different bond issuance team that's in place now, and they raised the issue about why we didn't have a franchise agreement with the City of Birmingham, and they wanted to make sure we got it done. So some of our bond counsel and those people say, you need to go ahead and take this action. So, I started the process the week before with the mayor's office and the city officials, and then I called Counselor Roberson and asked him to schedule an emergency, uh, Utilities Committee so that this could be done.
Okay.
So it is a kinda little bit on pressure, and I think that's our fault. We probably should've brought it before now. So I'll take the blame for that. I don't think Counselor Roberson knew anything about it, so I'll take the blame for that portion of it.
Okay, well, Mr. Underwood, let me say this, 'cause again, I'm not directing really my comments to you. Usually when, when we want things to pass around here, we normally have conversations. We had a conversation about this. You talking about four hundred and fif- fifty-six million dollar, is that, is that what I heard?
That's what the Water Works is refinancing.
You talking about almost a half a billion dollars? And we just not learning about it when we talking about it here today? That, that don't work. That doesn't have anything to do with you. That's an internal thing, because the minute that that special meeting was called because of the nature of it, should've been rallying some council members to say, hey, you need to be a part of this because this is the kinda money that we're talking about. Now, I, I will say this, and I'm speaking to my colleagues. I don't know how everybody feel about the water system. I want us to get our Water Works assets back. I want us to have it back. I really do. Uh, that has nothing to do with your management, that has nothing to do with anything other than that was an asset to the city that we need back. And the citizens basically said they want it back. Now, I just don't, uh, I, I, you know, I heard all of this about, well, you know, the city, uh, uh, owns part of the airport and the this, that, now that's fine, but at one time, we actually owned the Water Works and can repurchase it back if we pay off the debt associated with it. So, and I still say, uh, I'm just not inclined at this point, uh, and I hate that you're at that, that, that road of where you talking to some folk tomorrow, and we just talking about this today, unfortunately. But I, I, I will say that, uh, that is my concern, is having to deal with this lawsuit. We in a lawsuit right now. I just don't understand what part of that we're not trying to get or don't wanna get. But, Mr. Mack, I appreciate you. Sorry, I'm just not hearing about it. Maybe some other folks heard about it and thought it was a good secret to not share. But we needed to know that, especially when you talking about almost a half a billion dollar bond deal, okay?
Yeah, I don't know when the information got distributed here, but last week after meeting with Counselor Roberson and the Utilities Committee, we provided the PowerPoint presentation and had the dates and stuff in, and all that kinda information is in that PowerPoint presentation, child.
It is, and each council member received that, uh, yesterday. Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Yesterday, wow.
All right.
I'm a, am I?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Underwood, let me, uh, thank you. I, I think you're an outstanding CEO of the, um, of the, um, Water Works Board. I mean, we couldn't have a greater leader than you. But some of us have been to the, to Wall Street. Are you going to Wall Street tomorrow?
No, since this, since this is a refinancing, we thought we could do it on the phone with them, just kinda cover it that way.
Well, and, and what you do is what I had to do for the airport. You just explained to them that this going to the Committee of the Whole, because the entire council needs to be abreast as to what we're proposing here. Uh, that would work, uh, because I've been to the bond market, I've been to Wall Street, and, uh, and I can tell you that, um, once you explain what it is that you're doing, they will acquiesce to you, and it would not affect your bond rating at all. Uh, and because, number one, this won't be passed today, this is a public hearing. So next week is still back, be back before this council on, on the, on the agenda. But I do believe that needs to be a full-fledged, um, conversation, and, you know, and hindsight is, is everything. We've done this in the past where we've been asked to rush to, to do certain things, what have you. I just believe that we need to be informed, and getting some information yesterday, uh, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know what, what other people do, but I, you know, I have a job. And so if you put something in my box yesterday, chances are I didn't get a chance to read it because we had budget and finance meeting at four o'clock that lasted to seven o'clock. And by that time, Ms. Hoyt expected me at the house. And so I'm there, okay? So, um, I'm just, I'm still not inclined, you just need to explain to them why you're on the phone with them tomorrow, that it's been referred to the Committee of the Whole, and that perhaps when we are, uh, a little bit more informed, then we'll bring it back, and, you know, we'll be straight, um, you know, even with the refinance. And of course, I know this, and you know it too, 'cause you've been up there, you've been going to the bond market for a long time. But I do thank the Lord, I've been there and been exposed and know what the process is. Um, I've had to talk with Moody's and, and all these other folk on behalf of the airport, uh, when I was on the Airport Authority.
Um, Mr. Chairman and council members, can I ask you to do this, and I know it's probably a little bit out of ordinary, uh, but could I ask you all to vote on it today on the first reading? It has to come back again next week. And then, can we meet with you anytime you want to, between now and next Tuesday? The urgency is, we're planning to price the bonds on the twenty-third. So if you pull it this week, then it has to be back, uh, maybe next Tuesday. And then the following Tuesday is the day that we're planning on issuing the bond, so it's important that we have the agreement approved by that time and that date. And again, it's services that we're currently providing to customers in the City of Birmingham. It's the franchise fee and the franchise fee payments that we're currently doing. It's just solidifying the agreement that's currently in place from what's required in the, uh, state law. So if we could, if we could prove, uh, you know, vote on it today, we can meet with the council at any point in time that you want to, this week and next week, and then have the final approval the following week, because the following Tuesday is the date and time which we plan to sell the bonds.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the floor to refer this to the Committee of the Whole. Ready to vote on that motion?
When is our next meeting, Committee of the Whole meeting?
We can have a special call between now and next Tuesday, if you want to.
Well, it seems to me that, um, there is an urgency and, and it is last minute, but I think that since we all feel like the Water Works belongs to us, we wanna do what's best for them because they're gonna do what's best for us. So I do think if we refer it to Committee of the Whole, we oughta go ahead and have a meeting before next Tuesday and attend our business.
Yeah. Okay, all right, um, Counsel Rafferty.
If the intention is to revisit this issue next week, then it, rather than sending it to a committee, would it be of a better motion to make that we just delay it a week? And then that forces the council's hand to meet in this next week?
It forces the count.
Just let her finish, go ahead. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, because a lot of times, things get deferred to a committee, and things happen, and those committee meetings do not come to fruition, and then we end up in a bad place. And if we just defer it a week, that's all I wanna do, is give the assurance to the Water Works Board that we will meet.
Mr. President.
Well, there's, there's a motion on the floor to refer it to the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, Mr. President.
You wanna change it to defer, you wanna delay it a week, or you wanna still refer it?
I think we refer it, and, and I think we have agreed that we are gonna meet.
Yeah.
I think this is important to all of us, but I do think that something of this nature needs to be discussed holistically, and not just in a silo and a few folks making these kinda decisions. And that, I'm not signed on to that. Yeah, my folk didn't send me down here to do that.
Counselor Scales.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, 'cause I have a point of clarity. I'm interested in knowing what meetings that we have agreed to on this day is that we didn't meet.
What else?
It, it, it may, no ma'am, it may not be germane to what you think that's going on, Mr. President, but for public consumption, there's not been one meeting that this council as a body has agreed to that we did not honor, including meeting with the mayor. So I just wanted to know as a point of clarity, since you talking about forcing the council's hand, what meeting have we not had that we agreed to on this day is? Now, if we don't need to take that up, that's fine. I've got my point accomplished, 'cause I, I don't, you know, don't put out disparaging remarks. If we do, if we will agree to it, we've met, and we continue to meet. Maybe you need to show up, you know the meetings that we actually meet. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we're ready to vote on referring it to the Committee of the Whole.
Who, who was the second? I got.
I was.
I thought you made the motion. Who made the second?
Scales, I think. Scales, that you said was the motion.
Okay, sorry. All right, voting should be open. Councilmember Roberson, Parker, Tyson. How would you like to vote? How would you like to vote, Counsel?
We're just referring it to Committee of the Whole.
That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes with one abstention, one no vote. Next item, Mr. Clerk, let's move to take the, um, the item seventeen, I think.
Eighteen. Eighteen. Off the table, you say?
Yes, eighteen.
Okay. Need a motion to take it off the table?
Line, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
Need a motion on the item?
Yeah, a motion on item.
Council move?
Second.
All right. Lundie Hoyt, I have the, um, the substitute for this, the resolution, not ordinance. Mr. Roberts, do you have a copy of it?
Yes, sir, I've reviewed the, uh, resolution substitute. It is not the, uh, resolution in the form that was submitted by the Law Department.
I know. We're ready to, uh, we have a motion, a mover and a second. Uh, we're ready to vote on those items.
Okay, we need to, you need a motion to substitute?
Yeah.
Somebody need to make a motion?
Move substitute.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right.
And move the item as substitute.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, it's moved and properly seconded. Uh, that's for the contract and the, um, resolution, Mr. Clerk. Ready to vote.
Mr. President, my name is.
Uh, Councilor Abbott.
Yeah, I would like to know what the difference between what we've just been handed is and what the Law Department suggested. What are the differences?
Mr. Rubio, where is he?
There he is.
There, come. Mr. Rubio, can you come to podium and explain briefly what the difference is?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Freddie Rubio, we submitted this exact resolution to the Law Department. Um, the Law Department suggested one change, to delete the second and the third paragraph, maybe the, the second, third, and fourth paragraph of this resolution.
Second.
That was their suggestion.
Your suggestion.
In essence, that would eliminate the sentiment of the resolution.
Yeah. We need to leave it there. Okay.
Oh, the resolution. The ordinance.
Yeah, resolution.
It says ordinance. Is it an ordinance?
No. You're not looking at the right one. That's what they just handed us. Here you go.
Oh, is this it? Okay, so the third, second, third, and fourth, whereas, would be removed?
That's what they want us to do. The Law Department's suggesting that they want us to do.
It was only the second and third paragraph.
They just don't like it.
Which one?
Second and third.
Consistent P.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I stand corrected.
I'm ready to vote on it. All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Council Rafferty?
Yeah, I had, uh, just a point of clarity in the summation here on item eighteen. It says that we're doing this on behalf of the city of Birmingham as well as the council or is this just an action to represent the interest of the council?
Well, as the council, who sets the policy for the city of Birmingham, you may set the, uh, the voice of the city and how the city should move forward in, uh, litigating this case.
I understand that we make policy decisions and my question is, when we're taking on a legal action on behalf of the whole city, should not the administrative side be enjoined in this action? And I'm asking because I'm not exactly sure at, in reading all the materials I have before me, what the administration's position is on the action before us. I don't have a problem with as far as defendant in the action that's before us. I understand that quite clear. But as far as taking it further from the defendant position of the council, I am asking it, you're, it, it seems that we're implying that we're going to be taking on a lawsuit in an administrative way and that makes me uncomfortable.
Well, let me respond to that. Mr. Rubio?
Did I ask the, the Law Department to respond to that as well?
Yes, uh, uh, we will ask the Law Department to respond, but let me just say this. The, uh, council wants to retain the assets and control of the Waterworks Board and the administration wants to give it away. So we need to make a decision about, um, what we're going to do and let's go ahead and vote on it.
Mr. President?
Let's go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
That, that's an incorrect statement. You have not heard me make any, uh, statement to, um, to that extent at all.
Actions speak louder than words.
So, sir?
Nor have I taken any action in this lawsuit to do what you're saying.
The lawsuit and what paragraph two and three are implying are two different actions. So again, I don't have a problem as far as the defendant part because the council's been named. I have a problem in taking an administrative action to take on another lawsuit and hide it within this resolution and the adminis, and it's an administrative function to bring forward, not a council's administration to take forward to sue on behalf of the city without the coun, without the administration's support. And I'm asking this because we can't bankroll the lawsuit that you're looking at taking on when we join with the Waterworks Board. That the council can't do. We need to defer to the administration. I'm asking for the administration's position on this, please.
Mr. President, I have a point of clarity.
You allowed for them to answer, so may they? So will the administration answer that question, please?
They don't know.
We can answer that question, but we think it's a matter that should be addressed in executive session.
Yeah, I'm ready to vote. Yeah. All right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes, one abstention, one no vote. Next item, Mr. Clerk, call up item number eighty-two.
Item eighty-two, a resolution appointing one member to the Birmingham Waterworks for one term expiring November thirty of two thousand and sixteen.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
Move.
Second.
All right, we'll open up the floor to nominations. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. President?
Council Abbott?
Yeah, I don't have a nomination because we've never announced that we had a vacancy.
We did.
I did. I did.
Out of council, maybe?
Yes.
Two of them?
Yeah, it was, uh, it's been, what, a month ago? We did. Asked for resumes.
You announced it before Ann Florrie resigned?
After, whenever she resigned, I made it, I announced it. And I asked for resumes too. Do we have any, you have someone you want to enter in the nomination?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. William Muhammad.
All right, do we have any other names to be entered into nomination? All right, we'll close on that nomination, we're ready to vote. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President?
Council Rafferty?
If we received, uh, resumes, could I see those resumes and the name that's on the floor? Is there a resume that accompanies that nomination?
There should be, you should have.
No, sir, there is no attachments anywhere.
But yes, we're ready to vote. Um, we've closed on that nomination. I'll get your resume, Council Rafferty. Here it is. Ready to vote, roll call, Mr. Roberts.
Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Uh, we got it, uh, okay. Council, Pro Tim Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundie?
Yes.
Councilmember Rafferty?
No.
Uh, Councilmember Roberson? I'm sorry. Councilmember Parker? Councilmember Skales?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyson?
Yes.
President Austin?
Yes. Mr. Muhammad will be appointed to the term ending November thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, the unexpired term, Mrs. Ann Florrie. Congratulations. Um, next item, Mr. Clerk, um, should be, call up item seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight? I'm sorry.
Yes. Seventy-eight.
Item seventy-eight, in order to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen by appropriating three million dollars to fire station number eight.
A measure of approval?
Second.
All right. Council Parker?
Um, thank you, uh... Mr. President, um, let me get my notes. As you know, we've been highly, this has been discussed for a while. Um, I think yesterday's meeting, I think, was productive, uh, and so, um, at this time, I would like the residents, since they have been very diligent to come up and say a few words, and I, I know there are other items, as long as public speakers and also the, uh, under the presentations, so we'd like to just kind of consolidate it under one.
Do you want to do it as a presentation?
If, if that's okay, if, if that's.
I know some council members, uh, are going to have to leave at some point.
I have to stop.
However you want to do it, I just want to make sure we consolidate it or, and just kind of narrow the, if, with a lot of certain amount of time and we will stick to that.
Five minutes, go ahead.
Okay. All right, I would, uh, the, uh...
It's been rules for, um, a presentation, Council Parker?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I, I would.
Give him five minutes, Mr. Clerk.
And that's fine, we'll stick with that. I, the residents of, of the Kingston community, East Birmingham, uh, you all are here, uh, you were here last night, uh, and I just wanted you all to come up, uh, Pastor Webb and I know some of the other, Ms. Davis and the others, Ms. Bell, um, to come up and we're going to stick to the five minutes. I know some of you all have signed up for, for public speakers, but if we could just kind of consolidate it, Mr. Rockman, under one, under this five minutes and, uh, and we will, uh, act accordingly. So if y'all want to go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Good morning, uh, to, uh, Mayor Bell. Good morning, sir. Uh, to, uh, the President and, and other council members and to my counselor. Uh, again, we are, I, I would like to say that we're happy to be here, but I can't very well say that under these conditions. But I would like to say that there is a serious problem still going on here. And the problem is that, uh, the mayor has found the money. The money is there. Uh, every, he has exhausted, uh, everything that he could to get this ball moving. But I would like to say to those of you that's holding out, and, uh, I've been told that, uh, when the mayor does something, then you will, uh, pass this, but I would like to say to you, you're playing, you're playing Russian roulette with the citizens. We're not talking about brick and mortar. We're talking about the lives of the people, uh, not only in Kingston but East Birmingham and, uh, the community as a whole. You're playing Russian roulette with the lives. Like I said, I have an aunt that lives there with congestive heart failure and if anything happened to my old aunt, uh, it's going to encounter some very serious problems. But we need, we want, and, uh, really, we demand our fire station. We pay our taxes, we do everything that we're supposed to do, and we've been here every week and last night, we were here for a great deal of the night. And we're not playing any games. We're here for the seriousness of this matter and that matter is, we need our fire station. Now, what political football game you guys have going on, that's left up to you, but the mayor has done what he, uh, is supposed to do and so need to do for the lives of the people. Now, the ball is in your park and I understand you're not going to do anything until the mayor does something. Well, he's done it. Now, and, and our counselor has done it and we are really sick and tired of being, sick and tired of both of them being disrespected. So ladies and gentlemen, if you are who you say you are, especially in Christ, come on and pass this so we can get our fire station moving. Thank you to all of you. Thank you, Mrs. Abbott, uh, Ms. Rafferty, uh, Councilor Roberson, thank you and to our counselor. God bless you, sir.
Uh, good morning to our great mayor and, uh, good morning to the, uh, council. Uh, what I wanted to say this morning is per the fire station number eight there, uh, this is something that has been ongoing for the past couple of months. I happened to be at the meeting down there in Lovewood Village and, uh, the council at that time stated that this would be brought up and be, to be voted on, uh, within the next four to six weeks. And again, that has not happened. Each and every week, people have come here, uh, to get the fire station rebuilt, uh, people have pleaded with this council and for some reason, uh, the five majority have elected not to go forward with rebuilding this council, uh, rebuilding this, uh, fire station. I think it's an absolute travesty to that community. Uh, it speaks volumes, uh, coming from the majority of this council who have decided to play politics with people's lives. I was speaking with a firefighter on yesterday as I left the budget meeting and he stated to me, he says, Keith, I've been in firefighting since nineteen eighty-eight and I've never seen this kind of behavior, uh, coming from, uh, the council on getting something done that seriously needs to be done for the community and to immediately be done for the community. So I'm, I'm here to just plead with, uh, the council to go forward in finalizing this matter, uh, let's go ahead and vote to have the fire station built and to have people's lives saved and not lost. And I'm hopeful that it won't take a loss of life for this council to come to their senses and to see what is right and what should be done right for the people of that community and I'm hopeful that will be done today. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to talk. Thank you, uh, Parker.
Hey, Ms. Bell, let me, I, he just indicated that we've expended our...
You can be the last one.
Okay. Thank you very much. I want to say I do forgive the mayor, uh, for letting our fire station, uh, deteriorate and, and dilapidate to the extent that it did. We forgive you for that. We thank you for finding the three million. And we ask the council to help expedite this, although I said to my councilman last night, never did you tell me that you weren't on our side. And so we're asking you to expedite this. You are continuing to tell me even on today that you're willing to do it as fast as our twenty sixteen, seventeen budget is passed and our budget has been delayed. Most cities don't want to do that. So whatever it takes for you to save the lives of the people in Kingston, East Birmingham and Englewood, we ask you and the mayor to do that because, uh, this is the right thing to do. It is the godly thing to do. It never should have gotten in this condition. We're, right now, we're the only one closed completely and, uh, um, and I just, um, believe that you're going to do the right thing and I hope you will do it expeditiously. Uh, after all, the budget needs to be passed anyway.
All right.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and, uh, that's going to conclude our presentation. Uh, and, uh, I'll turn it back over.
All right, we have a mover and a second on, on item number seventy-eight. We have a motion, want to refer this to, to, uh, Budget and Finance?
I mean, I want it passed, so I mean...
I know.
So, um...
Mr. President, I, I move that we refer this to Budget and Finance, uh, giving us time to, uh, meet with the mayor.
All right, ready to vote? All right, that item will be referred to Committee of the Whole, I mean, I'm sorry, Budget and Finance. Let me go back, trying to find the item.
What's up?
Um, you're going to withdraw the other one? All right, call up item twenty-two, Mr. Clerk.
Item twenty-two. Item twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an office lease with LFHLLC as landlord under which the city has tenant, released three hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet of space and a building situated on real property located two thousand and one Twelfth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh three, for use at the city's police and fire department headquarters and for use by the municipal court for a term of twenty years. of twenty years, at an addition, initial annual base rent of twelve dollars and thirty-three cents per square foot, equalling four million four hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars per year, plus additional rent to include the annual operations and maintenance charge to the city. Based on the landlord's actual costs for operating and maintaining the property, currently estimated to be five dollars and one cents per square foot, or one million seven hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars for the first year, and landlord providing allowance for tenant improvements of thirty-seven dollars per square foot, equalling a total of thirteen million two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. For the city to pay for any cost of the improvements above the amount of the allowance, and with the city to pay additional annual rental co, to cover the tenant improvement allowance, would be two dollars and ninety cents per square foot, equalling a total of one million thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars per year.
We have a mover and a second.
Move there.
Item, Mr. Forrest. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Stanton, where's? Had a substitute, right.
That's, uh, is, is the administration substituted?
Yes. Need a motion.
To accept the substitution?
Yes, sir. Just the item is substituted, if not, it's the original item, we need to change.
Let me just go on with the original item.
I move the substitution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The substitute is before us. We have a mover and a second on the, on the substitute?
You just had it, she just did it.
That was just to put it, bring it before us.
Now, it's substituted the, the item altogether.
All right.
Just like an amendment.
All right, ready to vote? Counsel Rafferty?
Thank you. And I support the consolidation concept. And I have gone back and forth with all of the proposals about where we're going to stick it, but the essence of this issue has not been addressed by the administration, nor has the council asked these pertinent questions and demanded answers before we moved this before us. So, I just wanted to make clear what the questions were that are, that are still hanging out there. So, if this is a consolidation, public safety, administrative offices and services, specifically what offices and what services, the reason I ask that is because since the beginning of this discussion, we haven't had any in-depth discussion of exactly what we're doing.
We've, we asked that question.
Now, if, if I may, if I may.
I'm just, you're, you're saying that the council has not asked the question, maybe you didn't, but-
No, 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 the que-
Hold on, Counsel Skills.
These questions have been before the administration for the last seven years. The problem I'm having is that we keep having this discussion of where we're going to put, but we're not asking or demanding the details of what we're going to put.
Well, let me just-
So, if, if I may finish, sir.
Let me just say this, Counsel Rafferty. You're speaking as the council member from District Two. The council has made a request for all the information that you're going to ask, but go ahead, I'm just letting you know that you may not have asked those questions, but we, as a body, have asked all those questions.
And what I'm saying is, in the past, the, these questions have not come up, because we always get hung up on the location and the proposal, but not on the essence of the proposal. So, two, what are we currently paying out for each of these offices and services that, in their current locations? What will be the new overhead for the consolidation, and reflect, of course, reflecting the operational capital cost savings between the current and consolidated operations? Three, I understand the streamlining will allow for expansion of services, but how will that streamlining present itself into a plan of action? And I believe I asked for specifically from the department heads, because they're going to be the ones in control of this expansion, now we, or, or this consolidation. Now, we've been told that it was police and fire, police, fire, and municipal court, and then there's been, our inferences of pulling some portions back and some portions being put back before us. And then what is going to be done with the vacated facilities? And last, how do we intend to pay for it? Now, I did get a very short brief on the financial structure concerning this, this morning, but I'm not comfortable with what was put before us, because I don't like my back up against the wall, and receiving this information at the last minute makes me uncomfortable. I can't support choosing a location before I know what's going to go in the location, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
We had submitted several things in writing to the council, both the fire chief, police chief, as well as the chief judge of our municipal court submitting in writing what the space would be utilized for. We did an in-depth study, our planning and engineering department, on space utilization on, I think, two or three separate occasions, but we responded in writing to every question that has been raised to the administration.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Mr. President, for you to clatter the vote.
Yes.
Now, all that talking, and you abstaining. That's all I'm saying. All that talking and abstaining, now, we done, we have done the work, we've been in the committee, our questions were not asked.
They were not answered.
Have not answered. Suffice it.
To move forward.
All right, people, pay attention.
All right, that fails, next item.
Where'd you like to go? Still got one?
Counsel Parker said he's withdrawing his item.
What number is that, sir?
Um, that was item twenty-seven. And we have item forty-eight. That was the gentleman that came up. We do have the, Mr. Patton, the police athletic team? Okay, we'll take up this item, once they come back, we can suspend the rules.
Are you on the forty-eight?
Yes.
Item forty-eight, a resolution fixing, fixing a special assessment in the amount of two thousand two hundred and nine dollars against the property located at thirteen oh four first Avenue West, Birmingham, for the cost incurred for the demolition of unsafe building or structure.
Sir, did you want to meet with the, um, the, the committee? Okay, let's move to refer this back to PIC. I think this will go to PIC. It's Public Improvement Committee, Counsel Tyson, the Chair. I move that, all right. Move to refer this to PIC.
Voting should be up.
All right.
That vote should be up.
Call up, that item passes, call up item one, Mr. Clerk.
Item one. A resolution relative to the application of Gaines Enterprises LLC for a lounge retail liquor class one license to be used at the mixed bar and grill, seven hundred ninth Street North, Birmingham, and hearing of ours, supporters.
Mr. Protem.
Good morning.
Let's move the item. All right, Mr. Protem.
Okay, thank you very much. Detective Patterson, would you come and speak at the podium?
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, we have an application for a lounge retail liquor class one license for the mixed bar and grill, seven hundred ninth Street North.
Okay, thank you. Can you read the, the police report on this location?
Mr. Chairman, there were no incident reports for seven hundred ninth Street North.
Okay, very good. This is a public hearing, if there's anyone to speak for against this item, you may do so, and, and while that person is coming to speak, let me just read the Neighborhood Association report. This is the fifth, Smithfield Neighborhood Association, met on June the twelfth, two thousand sixteen, voted in reference to the license application. The concerns of the neighborhood regarding the granting this license are indicated, there were seventeen in attendance, four opposed, five support. Neighbors voted, neighbors' vote yielded the result of five to four against. This is signed by, I guess, Shirley Floyd, who's the neighborhood president. Sir, did you want to say something? Okay, very good. All right, any member of council want to speak to this item?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Did the neighborhood happen to say the reason for their vote, or was it just five in favor, four against, and that was it?
That was it, that's what, that's what she wrote. Neighborhood voted, yielded the result of the five to four vote, a yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, four. Okay, all right. If nothing else, I'll turn this back over to the President.
All right, we're ready to vote. That item passes, next item, we have, Mr. Patton, are they there? Are they ready? Okay, so, let's take up item, make sure, Mr. Clerk.
Sixty-nine, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-seven.
I know we're at the end, but let me go. Item sixty-nine.
Item sixty-nine, a resolution approving payment to Perpetual Corporation Sinclair Television Stations doing business as WBMA, Coxville, Maryland, in amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars for a term of one year for the monthly City of Birmingham Community Base Show pursuant to section eleven dash forty dash one, and section eleven dash forty-seven dash nine of Dakota, Alabama, nineteen seventy-five.
We have a mover and a second. Second. All right, ready to vote.
Mr. President, my name's, uh-
Go ahead, Counsel Abbott.
What is this?
Is Brittany here? I can tell you.
Well, somebody needs to tell me, because there was nothing attached to this, and I realize something's wrong today, and half the stuff didn't end up on the iPad, but, um, there's no explanation for what this is.
Yeah, it was, it came before committee a whole while ago. You remember we were talking about, and Brittany can kind of explain more about what we're doing, but do you remember we talked about the, um, doing a monthly show with ABC thirty, thirty-three forty, right? Thirty-three four, it's been several, I don't know how many months ago, maybe two?
About two months ago.
Two months.
We had it on committee.
That may be the one that I had to leave early, because I don't remember hearing this, so if you can just explain it.
Just briefly, just-
Okay, we're just, we're working with thirty-three forty to be able to continue to expand the council's outreach, to be able to share the message, where we will include a lot of the video segments that we're recording in-house on that show, and they will be aired through a one, once a month segment that's an hour long on thirty-three forty.
Okay, so it'll be the videos that are produced by your office?
Correct.
And people will just watch all our videos?
Yeah, it'll be videos, we're going to go out to the communities, get more in-depth conversations with some of the residents about some of the issues that they would like to see resolved, so more so another visual component to the public information office.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, we're ready to vote.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item. You ready?
Yes.
Okay, let's move to suspend the rules for presentation.
Are we finished with the agenda?
We've got. Hold on, Mr. Mayor, let's move to suspend the rules for a presentation.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
We have with us this morning Sergeant Venus Nguyen, who's here to give us an update on the Birmingham Police Athletic Teams after exciting baseball and softball team. You probably know that some of the hardware that's coming in with them, that should give you some indication as well. Sergeant. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, I'm Sergeant Nguyen, and I bring before you part of the children that were, that play and participate with the Birmingham Police Athletic Team. On behalf of the PAT staff, we would like to thank the City of Birmingham, the Mayor's Office, City Council, and also the Birmingham Police Department, and your support during the twenty sixteen PAT season. Starting with our basketball, we ended the season with sixty-six teams, a fifty percent increase from twenty fifteen. We took four teams to Atlanta, Georgia, to participate in the Georgia Tar Heel Tournament. We brought back three of the championship tournament trophies. With volleyball, we exchanged it and revamped it to a volleyball clinic with increase of skills and fundamentals for the volleyball games. The parents demanded it to exceed from June twenty-ninth to July the twenty-sixth. We went on with our summer program, and we implemented a program called Midnight Madness, where four weeks, biweekly, we went to various churches, which will be Faith Chapel, Integrity Bible Church, and also More Than Congress. We partnered with them this summer, to where we had youth and young adults ranging from the ages of thirteen to twenty-one to participate in playing basketball. We ended that summer program with an overnight stay at Faith Chapel, where the children were able to play bowling, basketball, and we also implemented three sessions for them to take part in, and those sessions were police encounter, conflict resolution, CPR, interview preparation, and video gaming. And with the CPR, we were able to certify thirty of our youth and young adults to CPR certification, so they will be receiving their cards. And I found we want to talk about our baseball softball season. It ended with fifty teams, an increase from thirty-three teams in twenty fifteen. We also had seven all-star teams, AG Gassen, thirteen-year-old, and midfield ten-year-old all-stars participated in the Piper Davis Tournament, and they both received the second-place trophies in that. But behind me, I have, I'm really pleased to say and announce that these young men, AG Gassen All-Star Team, thirteen-year-olds, they all, they won the state tournament along with the World Series with Dizzy Dean. We have five coordinators, first one being Officer Hambride, Officer Nelson, Officer Pope, Preston, and Officer Smith. And our commanders in chief are Lieutenant, Lieutenant James Jackson, and also Captain Cappy Peoples with the Youth Services Division. And we do present to you these fine young men who have represented Birmingham City quite well. I would like for you all to state your names, please.
Good morning, my name is Jacoby Andrews, and I attend H. Parker High School.
Good morning, my name is Cameron Ivory, and I attend Phillips Academy.
Good morning, my name Ross Holloway, and I attend Malakai Wooks.
Good morning, my name is Aaron Marshall, and I attend Pleasant Grove Middle School.
Good morning, my name is Emily, and I attend Minor Middle, Minor High School.
Good morning, my name is Melakai Beany, and I attend Faffey High School.
Good morning, my name is Christian Thomas, and I attend Green Aces.
Good morning, my name is Jay Andrews, and I attend Ramsey High School.
Good morning, my name is Kalina Jones, and I attend Minor High School.
Good morning, my name is Arby Wood, and I attend Minor Middle School.
And also, they are led by three fine coaches, that's Coach Tim Boyd, Frank Ivory, and Levert Andrews. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. President? Hold up, fellas. Okay, well, I'm, I'm just ecstatic that these young people are so engaged, and that they are representing us throughout the state, and I guess you all, the teams come from all over the country. And so, in act, in actuality, this is a national award, quite frankly, and so, this is the kind of stuff we need to celebrate, and I'm just really proud to know that you all are doing that. I want to say kudos to the police department, and Frank Adams, you, you continue to shine all the more with what you're doing over there. I always think that one of the greatest blessings that we can have in this city is to have Frank Adams Junior over there working with our Boys and Girls Club, and you're doing a fine job, and I just appreciate that so much. And then I see my, my college classmate over here, he didn't get y'all to play, you know, football, because, you know, he was an outstanding footballer. I'm talking about Mr. Nelson, you don't even know who I'm talking about, from Bessemer, but he won, he was one of the baddest football players, running back at Miles College, and so, y'all got a good person over there. I don't know the rest of you all, but I, I really appreciate the kind of time and talent that you instill in these young people, and is it Captain Nguyen? Sergeant Nguyen? Okay, okay. Well, you know, I'm speaking as though it is, okay? So, but yes, but this is just wonderful, that you all would take the time, and this is what, you know, we talk about community policing, but this is really what it's all about, you know, and they need to see us in a different light than what they see and portrayed on TV, and so this is wonderful. And I just think we need to celebrate you all the more. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much, Council President, Council. I just, go ahead and...
No, I was about to hear the floor.
You want Chief, you...
Well, we'll let Chief speak, and then I'll come behind.
I was gonna simply say, this is what's right with our community, and a couple of years ago, we stood up a Community Services Division, and you see the officers that help make up that division. So when people talk about community policing, in light of the national challenges, it's not something that we just started talking about and working on yesterday. We've been doing it for years. And so you see amazing kids, these coaches and volunteers who devote so much of their time, people like Frank and these officers, and they're doing amazing things, and the program continues to grow. And so I want to thank the mayor and the council for the support, because we keep expanding teams, we keep doing new things. Midnight Basketball was new for us this year, and to see those numbers grow every couple of weeks was just amazing. We even had some moms and dads who wanted to just hang out with us also. So it's just not the kids playing. It's like, you got to leave. This is for the kids, and so they wanted to be a part of it. And so I'm just so proud of what our people do every day, and I'm proud of these young men, because you can tell they're some sharp fellows.
You ready, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Well, I want to say congratulations to them, because it is such a blessing to see that you're not a statistic. You're actually beating the odds, and that's why I kept smiling, and some of you all looking down, we were making eye contact, and you coming back up, because I am happy. And even though I'm a very strong woman, I do understand that I can never teach a boy how to be a man. So Sergeant Nguyen has been my favorite, I don't want to say my favorite girl in this setting, but she's been my sweetheart at our schools over in our area. And, but I like to see these men being the gatekeepers. No matter how strong of a woman you are, God always designed for that man to be the gatekeeper. And when he can't be the gatekeeper, if you know like I know, we'll take control now. We'd just like for you to do your part. I want to say kudos to the President, because I was looking, I said, "Well, wasn't this a part of your presentation?" And he said, "Yeah." I was like, "Oh, okay," because they were going out there in the hall. You gonna make sure they come back? You know, I didn't want you all to leave. So I say congratulations to each and every one of you all that have participated, and I want to say thank you to every officer. I understand that this is, this is a unique time in our history, and every officer is not a bad officer, okay? And things like this, we don't have to say the media's not gonna run to it. I say out of all these press releases that come out of City Hall, why don't we start writing something about this? This is what's gonna change the face of how people view black young men. They gotta start seeing them in a positive light. Nobody talks about them in this light. You're gonna go by some of the negative things that you see, and that's just the truth. And so every time I see something on Facebook now, you almost kind of like, on pins and these, like, "Lord, please don't let this be another situation." You know what I mean? We don't want that. We don't want that. And you don't want that, and that's why you're making the investment that you are. So I want to tell you personally how much I appreciate all of you all as officers, because we need you. I don't want to be in a lawless society. I need law enforcement. And I understand your job is to protect, but I also understand that your job is to enforce the law. And Chief, I'm always happy to say what I say about you, because you all have been modest this morning. Actually, you had over a hundred children. Was that a hundred children, like one sixteen? That were at Faith Chapel. I think that says a lot. And Frank, I can't help but to say good things about you. And I know that sometimes you like being in the shadow. I look forward to the day when you come to the forefront. And I'm gonna keep saying that, because I know some people say City Hall is where dreamers come to die. Well, don't make your rest at your bode at City Hall, but you need to be somewhere, because I do believe that you are, you're a rising star, and it's just time for us to start acknowledging the gifts that we have in our community. It don't take anything away from me in order to say good things about you. I don't know why we're on that tip, but we need to get off of it, because these young folk, they're watching that. So when we have people in our communities that are doing not only great things, you are an example of what young men should look like. We got girls, women, who are wonderful examples, Sergeant, of what we should look like. It shouldn't be where you can't be a mouthpiece, because they can talk about me up here, but they can't stop me from talking. And as long as I'm here, they're not gonna stop me from talking nor voting.
And your time is up.
My own conscience. And thank you, Mr. President. I oblige. But thank you, Mr. President, for bringing them up here. And every time we have something good, I think we ought to do some good Campbell soup and make it real good now. And every time we have this opportunity, we need to praise them while we can look at them.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilor Abbott?
My colleague certainly spoke the truth. We cannot stop her from talking. I want to congratulate all of the young men, and I want to congratulate the older men, and also the single lady who's here. This is great for Birmingham. I'm really proud of y'all, and I wanted to ask the Chief how young men are recruited from Birmingham schools to participate, because I think that there are probably a lot of people that would like to participate, and I just wondered how you go about recruiting?
Primarily through our school resource officers at the Birmingham schools, but also through all of the events that our officers are a part of. So we're always talking about the Police Athletic League, and in fact, we had over fifty basketball teams. So when you look at ten to fifteen kids per team times fifty, you start seeing the impact. So this is just a small number. We're talking baseball here, but baseball, basketball, we're now going into volleyball. So literally everything we do in the department that involves kids, somebody's talking about the Police Athletic League. And we get phone calls to our Community Services Division, and then we have a lot of repeat performers. So it's always great to see a kid who's successful in college, and they go back and say, "You know what? I was a part of the Police Athletic League," because they normally keep coming back. And so it's great that the city supports it, and as we continue to expand it, it'll grow even more, no doubt about it.
Thank you. It's a wonderful program, and I'm really glad that we're fixing up our parks so that y'all have a place to play. So thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
He said, hold up, he said he didn't introduce himself, so we're gonna give you that opportunity.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Brian Ross. I go to Pleasant Grove Middle School.
Okay. All right, we have item seventy-one. Mr. Clerk?
A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Camilla Gray Lewis, Committee Assistant, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia. No charge, June the thirteenth and the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Act Clinton Global Initiative Meeting. Pocari Malden, Administrative Assistant Office of the Mayor, New York City, New York, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, April eighteenth, through the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend to What Works City Summit Transforming Data into Action. William Parker, Council, City Council, Memphis, Tennessee, one thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and twelve cents, May the twenty-fifth, end of twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization. William Parker, Council, City Council, Washington, DC, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents, June the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Department of Interior Environmental Protection Act meetings. William Parker, Council, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-two cents, May the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, to attend United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization. You say seventy-two as well?
No.
No, okay.
Second.
Parker Abbott, ready to vote? These are for, this is basically closing out some travel and expenses that they did back in, when, last, yeah, in the previous fiscal year. We got one more.
Missing somebody. Counsel?
Council Abbott. All right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, item seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
Mm-hmm.
Item seventy-two, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Washington, DC, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents, August eleventh, end of twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend World Heritage Site Meeting. William Parker, Council, City Council, Washington, DC, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents, August eleventh and the twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend World Heritage Site Meeting.
Second.
Parker Abbott. This is for upcoming travel. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Missing somebody.
I can't vote.
Who am I missing?
Me. And...
You can't vote?
No.
I don't know why.
No. That item fails. Next item.
Where would you like to go?
Seventy-nine.
Items, I think we still have seventy-seven, but you want to go seventy-nine?
Seventy-seven? I thought we put that, no, that was on consent. Wouldn't account for that.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
I thought seventy-three through seventy-seven.
Yeah, they were on consent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it. Seventy-seven, made seventy-seven.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, a resolution authorized the mayor to execute an agreement with the Erskine-Hawkins Tuxedo Junction Park Association Incorporated into its spend funds in an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars for goods and services to include, but it's not limited to police, fire, parking, staging, printing, and other things of value in connection with hosting of the function in the junction festival in the City of Birmingham.
Move the item.
Second.
Austin Hoyt, Council Skills, we had a court. You want to know what we're doing?
Yeah, Mr. President, because I thought function in the junction already passed, and certainly I supported it. That's not my issue, but what are we doing post the fact of when they were supposed to already had had the event? Like, when is this event supposed to take place? Because I thought it had already supposedly taken place, it just didn't have funding.
I'm sorry. You have, that's a question for the administration, Councilor Skels.
Yeah, then whoever can answer.
Not taking place.
It has not taken, when is it supposed to take place, Mr. Mayor?
I'm looking for it in the resolution. I can't find it.
Terry Burney can come in and explain it. There he is.
And before, Counselors, hold on, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
And before you explain it to Mr. Bernie, because I know that, Mr. President, that Counselor Lundey, in his absence, he actually put this in the budget, so now are we going back to this, trying to pull out pieces of the budget? That's, I want to know that, because I have no problem with supporting function at the junction. I don't want nobody to put words in my mouth. But I do know that, again, this is something that's in the budget. Why don't we pass the budget and be done with this, instead of just taking out little things as we so choose, or when somebody in the public gets upset about a matter, then we go and address it, as opposed to just doing it the right way and pass a budget. So go ahead, Mr. Bernie.
Okay, Counselors, the date for the function at the junction is September third. We've been in contact with Mrs. Magnolia Cook, who is the coordinator of it. Also, as far as the funding is concerned, that is actually coming out of the Mayor's Office budget for this year, because it was not funded in last year's budget. So in order to have the event, we have to find a funding source, so that's where it's coming from.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Bernie. So, Mr. President, then that is my question. So we're going, this is funds, Mr. Bernie, that is in lieu of us not passing a budget, so we referring back to last year's budget?
We're actually using some of the funds that were in our budget, that's in the new, in our old new budget, I'll say it that way, to fund it with, yes, because that was...
Like, is this the money y'all put into Fund One-O-Two that you didn't use?
No, no.
Because I'm wondering how you all are able to use money from last year, when if we don't expend all our money by June thirtieth, it goes to the general fund?
Counselor, let me say it this way. The operating budget for FY16 became the new FY17 budget.
Right.
So we have discretionary funds and consulting, in the consulting line item that we're able to use how we choose to do so. Because the event is coming up, and the new budget had not been passed, we chose to use some of our consulting money to fund this year's function at the junction.
So when you say consulting money, is that consulting money that's coming out of this new year's, fiscal year's budget, or last year's fiscal budget?
Last year's fiscal budget is this year's budget.
Until we pass a new budget.
No, then let me, let me explain myself. Is this money that's carried over from last year's budget?
No.
Okay, because y'all know how I get when you're trying to talk for me. I can talk for myself. I'm just asking that question, because I'm trying to figure out how y'all do it, so then I can join the bandwagon, and the Law Department won't flag me, okay? But, but let me just say this, Mr. President. Now, we, you know, I'm not against function at the junction at all. I think it's very helpful for the community, and has been for some time, and obviously, all these campaigners think so too. But nevertheless, again, I don't want us to go back until we pulling out stuff in the budget, instead of letting the mayor have this talk with the council and go on and pass the budget, because the council member that represents that district has already fully agreed to fifty thousand dollars for function at the junction anyway. All you got to do is just pass the budget. That's all that I'm saying, Mr. President. And we seem to get creative every week, and I think it's very divisive. I'm entitled to my opinion, so if somebody don't feel a certain way, that's fine. You can speak to the microphone, but I'm just telling you about me. I think if you do whatever you do in principle, if you do it the right way, then we won't have all of this stuff. But, you know, we pulling out and doing this and doing that. I mean, you know, I just don't think it's right. And of course, by the time it feeds out to radio and television, it's always end up going to be something more than what's actually happening. This was already in the budget. The mayor didn't have to take out a dime out of his. I'm glad that he decided to do it, since he zeroed him out last year. But we talking about the council member for the district already agreed to fifty thousand dollars being placed in the budget. Is that not right, Mr. President?
Yeah, but I'll say this. We have the budget from the previous fiscal year. When we don't pass it, then the budget from the previous fiscal year becomes the next, the new operating budget, until we pass a new budget. So the mayor has obviously identified funds, which he can do within his budget, that was the last budget that was approved, which was last year's budget. So he's operating within that, as we all are. And so, bless you, so, once we do pass a new budget, then we don't have to take that fifty thousand dollars that's already been identified in the proposal that we submitted to the mayor to function in junction, because the mayor has been so gracious to take it out of his, or wherever he found it.
Okay, so, Mr. President, while we...
In the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget.
Okay, well, you know, that's the advantage the public needs to know that the council doesn't have. We don't have the ability to find money, so we only have the money we know about. We don't have no endless treasure chest, and folk can actually tell us where to go find the money.
Well, it's...
Okay, but, no, I'm not mocking you, Mr. President. You know exactly what I'm saying, because that's the issue about this fire station and everything else, that that side of the hall can do whatever they want to do, and then when it comes down to us, we got a thousand reasons from the Law Department why we can't do what we need to do, and then the Finance Department gonna say that we don't have the money to do it. So, hey, I understand all these folk report to the mayor. But with that having said, Mr. President, I got that part. I'm just trying to say that in the absence of this council member, because I think we need to do a better job, instead of trying to make the council the sacrificial lamb, I think that the public needs to know, the council member who represents that district already put it in the budget. So I don't want us to go out of here that Mr. Mayor is so gracious, because he got April Odom meeting. She gonna send out a lot of tweets and everything else when this meeting is over about function at the junction. But the council member, had we passed the budget, had already placed this item in the budget. I want to say that on Marcus Lundey's behalf, in his absence, and I hope that council members will afford me the same courtesy, that if I've done something for District One, if I'm not here, at least say that I attempted. I mean, that's just unfortunate that we do that. But, Mr. President, I'm ready to vote, because I'm in full favor of function at the junction. Hopefully, next year, we won't have to play a tennis ball with it anyway, that it's gonna already be in the budget, but probably because it's an election year, it's gonna be there anyway. but probably because it's an election year, it's gonna be there anyway.
Mr. Protem.
Yeah, well, and, uh, Counselor Mary Lee, um, in part, uh, what you said is- is very true. Um, Ms. Cook approached me on Saturday at Bush Hills, uh, Get to Know Your Neighbor Day, and I told her that, uh, she needed to, uh, talk to the mayor, obviously, she did, uh, because I saw a picture of him, um, after I had left the, um, uh, the Get to Know Your Neighbor Day. And so, uh, I'm glad, because Tuxedo, uh, function of the junction needs to happen. And however, you know, whatever means we get that done, I think it's- it's fine. Uh, I think it's a great event, it has great history, and so, uh, the mayor has graciously provided it out of his budget, I think we just need to say thank you. Uh, that's how I feel about it. Uh, but I'm glad that Ms. uh, Ms. Cook, because she was seeing the thing we were holding up, and we weren't holding up, it's in the budget, but the mayor, as I told her then, needs to sign the onus this, and then we could, uh, move forward with the, uh, with the new budget. But, um, we are operating in the, um, in the, uh, twenty seventeen budget, because the old budget becomes the new budget. Uh, I do, and that's, and that's in perpetuity, until we actually pass a new budget. And hopefully, that's going to be happening, uh, very soon. So, I appreciate, uh, the mayor honoring, uh, Mrs. Cook's, uh, requests, uh, with respect to that. And I think we just, you know, we are able to reposition, uh, those dollars that have been allocated, uh, to some other concerns that the council may have, uh, with respect to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ready to vote.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, one no vote. Next item, Mr. Clark, should be?
Eighty.
Uh, item eighty, yes.
A resolution, rescinding resolution number thirteen seventeen sixteen adopted by the council, July the nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, sixteen twenty, corroded permit to act as legal counsel on behalf of the city council.
Second, move. Second. You moving a second yourself?
Why not?
It's just rescinding that resolution. Ready to vote.
Missing one. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item should be eighty-one.
Item eighty-one, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts, and that's-
Kiara Morrow.
Addendum, Kiara Morrow, PIO Office, City Council, Orlando, Florida. Two thousand five hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents, August fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend advanced leadership certification program.
Move the item.
Second.
Hoyt, Scales, ready to vote.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item, we are, um, we have a few presentations left. I think that concludes the items on the agenda, Mr. Clark.
I know, you got the mayor's report, and you give it.
And we have the, uh, we have Coach Mastin here.
No, he's been canceled.
Uh, what about Dr. Wesley?
Dr. Wesley is supposed to be here.
Okay, all right, let's move, spin the rules of our speakers. Second.
All in favor, let it be done by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, um, hold on, Mr. Clark. First speaker.
Brenda Dix- Dr. Dixon.
Dr. Dickerson, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Brenda Dickerson, my address is twelve fifteen Thirty-first Street, South Birmingham. The Citizens Coalition for a Better Birmingham was convinced since early twenty fourteen, when we first learned of the Haney no-bid proposal to lease the old social security building, that it was a very bad deal. To know that a Tennessee developer had purchased that building from the city for seven point two million dollars, and then wanted to lease it back to the city for a hundred thirty nine million dollars was incredulous. That he, Haney, just like that, would snatch away our money, because he had made campaign contributions, was not a concept that we would accept. Our coalition, along with others, led the effort to educate and to inform residents that the proposal was not a good expenditure of taxpayer dollars. More significant, however, was the fact that the mayor and members of the council were actually considering such a wasteful use of millions of dollars. Our tax dollars must work for us. But today, you have made and taken a sensible and realistic look at the ridiculous resolution put forth by Mayor Bell, and you have voted against an idea that this was good for the police and fire administrative offices and the municipal court. Thank you, President Austin, President Protem Hoyt, members of the council, and the public, for standing against Mr. Haney's proposal. I'd also like to acknowledge the efforts and contributions of the members of the Citizens Coalition for a Better Birmingham. I am eternally grateful to you and for your hard work and dedication. The people of this city get a victory today. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, Valerie Clark.
Mr. Clark.
Mm-hmm.
Did we do the mayor's report? I- I asked that, it's communication from the mayor. I got something for one, Lou.
I do too.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
On behalf of the South Side Planning Committee, I'm here to invite you all to our annual thirty-one event. On Thursday, August the eleventh, we have our praise and rec- uh, worship kickoff at Twenty-third Street Baptist Church. On August the twelfth, we have our annual dance, which is at the Birmingham Fire Department, located in the Homewood Court. On Saturday is our picnic, which is family and friends at Joy Warden Park. On Sunday, we would be worshiping at the Grass Chapel Church, six- sixty-nine thirty-one Division Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama. Our farewell is August the fourteenth at the Fire- Firefighter Union in Homewood. We would like for the mayor and the council member to, uh, support us with our, you- our event. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Vicki Tolbert.
Ms. Tolbert. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Vicki, I'm on Motherstone, Twenty-third Street, Enzo, and I got a problem. Steve Hoyt, me, he been friend of mine a long time. First of all, I thank God, I ain't like I used to be. My mother's up there crying every day by the implement, this, uh, burning house up here. They told me the other day, I went to the ballpark down there, and I met some lady out of Keenstone, told me the cut off right now on where my mama stay at. The neighborhood is so bad around there, y'all, I had to sit on the porch up there. It's just the weather up there. And I'm tired of it. And this young man right here, he been helping me through the year, he know how long I've been running down here. And I'm tired, my mama saying every day, she wish somebody to come out there, this evening, I'm gonna break it live, up there with Charles Fox, thirty-three forty, and show y'all how the neighborhood living up there. It's infected up there. I love the neighborhood, I ain't got no problem, but my mama not getting to live like that, in a drug addiction, and she got a daughter, she's a- a recovering addict, and that's me. And I love that neighborhood. I'm not gonna let my mama sit up there like she just throw away up there. And it kept me the cut off, and I want to know who your, uh, your, uh, your council thing is. Uh, for the, uh, for neighborhood thing, it kept me the cut off from there.
On Twenty-third, now, that's- that's gonna be in Counselor Lundey's district, but, uh, you and I have talked about this before, and we reported to the mayor's office-
But also, my brother gonna send a picture down here and everything.
Ms. Vicki, uh, but you're talking to the right one, you just alluded to Mr. Patton. Mr. Patton is the only one who can tell those workers and the mayor to go and clean that up. And there's nothing that your council can do with respect to that, other than report it. Uh, when you report it to me, it's reported to them, and you're talking to the right one. I've been talking about the grass that's grown up on the, on, uh, on, uh, I, on the Avenue I exit is so high that children are getting lost in the grass, and they had to call amber alert.
And that's true.
And I'm just here to tell you, this, I've been talking about that for the last two months, and it still hadn't been cut. You know, uh, we've talked a lot about community policing.
Uh-huh.
But there's a- there's a- there's a, um, a scenario that they talk about, the broken glass, uh, syndrome. And that's when- when people break out glass and it doesn't get the attention, then they continue to break out glass, and then so it looks like people don't care. And the fact that this grass is growing up, uh, beyond understanding, will be an also an opportunity for, uh, for the ci- city to come and clean it up. I've been asking about that, so I'm glad you're here today. Hopefully, you'll get it done.
I thank y'all.
Thank you.
For truly, I'm, I'm, you know, it just bothers me, because my mama is old, and she just sit up and call me on the phone, because she know I'm, I- I love the neighborhood.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
I know you are.
I just can't let my mama live like that.
Yeah.
And she pay taxes too.
Mr. Protem.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Protem.
Yes, Counselor. Counselor, uh, Ms. Vicki, Counselor Scales want to say something to you?
Let me, uh, can you come back up if you don't mind? I- I join you with, uh, being, um, emotional, uh, Ms. Vicki. Uh, I think that more people should start putting a face to the problem, because I'm not gonna speak for anyone, but my grandmama said, "Love is what love does." And if you ain't doing nothing, just as Ebonik is, I just said it, there is no love. And when council members, I- I told the president, uh, a couple of months ago, we have got to have an intentional effort to teach citizens who's responsible for what. The council put in the budget, which is our job. Now, when it's our job, you come on down here, you get on us too, okay? But we put in the budget last year, four point six million dollars to clean up these lots and abandoned homes. And I'm just gonna tell you the truth, across from Gibson Elementary School, right off, I think that's Fifty-first Street, okay, uh, and some other places in this city, it is deplorable. And I know the first person that people are trained to look at is the counselor, because you're gonna see the counselor before you see the mayor. I get that, but we have a husband and a wife, the wife doing her job. Husband got to bring it home. Now, I'm just telling you how it is, because when folk blame things on this council, I don't have no problem with saying, if it's about the law, if it's about balancing a budget, if it's about advocating for you, yes, ma'am, Ms. Vicki, you come right on down here every week, and you get on this council. But the mayor has a responsibility too.
Uh-huh.
And even if he was here, I'd say the same thing, because he listening. He has a responsibility too. And- and it's so unfortunate that people are made to look at the council a certain way, when in fact, it's not the council. If we don't put the funding in place, that's another set of rules.
That's right.
Meaning, if we don't give you the resources, the money, but once we give the mayor the money, we gonna do like, I got some apartments that I just told the president, I said, "Yeah, I- I got some for the mayor." Because, see, I had a woman burned up alive over there in my district on Sun Hill Road. Had some folk to come down here from Valley Brook Apartments, and one of the city workers, who is an inspector for the city, that his stepson was killed in Valley Brook only three weeks ago, okay? So, Mr. President, I'm gonna end on that note, but, Ms. Vicki, you keep coming until you get some action.
Yeah, because I'm breaking live this evening at six o'clock up there.
You do whatever it takes.
And showing how many taxes he has up there.
Yeah, you do whatever it takes.
I'm good for my neighborhood, because that's my mama's neighborhood, because wherever my mama stay at, when my mama hurt, I hurt too.
Yep. Next speaker.
Keith Mams.
Now, you spoke, um, earlier during the presentation, so just make your comments brief, so we can move on.
I have three minutes, is that correct?
State your name and address for the record.
Keith Mams, six twenty-nine McCary Street Southwest, three five two one one. Wanted to talk very briefly this morning on the subject of the majority city council professionalism, or better yet, the lack thereof. I'm gravely concerned about the constant personal attacks, the cursing at adults, and the blatant made-up lies that come from the majority of this council. It reached what I term a scumbag low level on last week, as on WA TV Morning Talk Show, LaShonda Scales brought my former wife and my family into the conversation and made a statement, "You're not gonna talk to me as you did your ex-wife and family." I want, uh, this council to know that this will not be tolerated by myself. Example number two, Sheila Tyson cursing out Brother Rockman at the meeting in Lovelands Village, telling the people of En- Enslie, uh, during a meeting to shut the F up, uh, and has denied these allegations. She's constantly eating on the di- diocese and leaving. Example three, Stephen Hoyt stated on a talk show, ra- radio talk show, that people were paid fifty dollars to be with the protesters of the Fire Station Number Eight. This has been a pattern that certainly won't be tolerated by myself. If you make comments about my former wife or my family and expect me to be quiet, that won't happen. Uh, I certainly will let you know about the alleged dope boy husband that one has, the con artist daddy, and the shot- shot house and liquor selling grandma. So, in closing, I say that, uh, oftentimes, the majority council becomes very adversarial and very loud on the front end of conversations, particularly on radio shows, as they won't answer questions. So, with this being said, I wanted to let, uh, alert this majority council that the professionalism needs to immediately improve, and it will not be tolerated by myself. Have a great day.
Mr. President, well, and, you know, to come and suggest that the council would do something that you didn't do yourself is hypocritical in it- in and of itself, and quite frankly, um, I could care less. You know, one of the things that Judge, uh, Pearson taught us, uh, at least he suggested to us, and I- I kind of use it as a mantra, and that is, he say, "You don't stop people when they come down here and praise you, so you shouldn't stop them when they want to criticize you." And I don't have a problem with the criticism, because I'm not gonna be one of these, uh, weak-kneed politicians. I get with you, and I get with you the same way you get with me. And, uh, and you know that when you call in the radio, you know, I, you know, you can't be the last word, because I'm gonna be the last word, and I know how to get with you on your level. Uh, you know, one of the beauties about, uh, my experiences, I've been to the White House, I've been to the Out House, I've been on Back Street, I've been on Front Street, and I know how to get with you every day of the week. And listen, um, nobody hears you really, uh, because it's just rhetoric, and that's all you do. And, but I appreciate you coming here, sharing your thoughts, you have thoughts, uh, we all have thoughts, uh, but, uh, some of them, uh, uh, convoluted at best. Thank you.
Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna definitely do all that I can do to just, s- you know, some- sometime when people make, uh, comments, you try to ignore, but let- let me just say this, because I- I actually heard Mr. Mams on the radio when he got cut off three times, okay? And let me just say this, the con artist daddy is the very daddy that brought Raven-Symone at the opening of this man's store. The drug dealing husband find me one stitch of paper since nineteen ninety-one that he- The drug dealing husband find me one stitch of paper since nineteen ninety-one that he's been my husband, that he was a drug dealer. I'll shut my mouth. And when you wanna talk about your family and all that kinda stuff, I didn't bring up your family. You don't call people names. And I meant what I said on the radio. If you wanna talk, I'm open to listen. What I'm not going to do is allow you to insult me as a woman and call me a name before you proceeded to wanna talk to me. Now, maybe, maybe that's the way, I meant what I said. Maybe that's the way you deal-
Hold on, Councilor Scales. Mr. Meams, you are out of order. No one talked to you, no one talked while you were speaking. If you are not gonna acknowledge the rules of decorum in here, I'll ask you to leave. So please, you are not acknowledged to speak, so please don't speak. All right, go ahead, Councilor Scales.
So, let me just say this, because anyone that listens to W A T V, and probably unlike Mr. Meams, we have encouraged the city to spend money with W A T V. So I understand he's a radio warrior. I under- I understand.
Please, thank you.
I understand, at the end of the day, he, he is benefiting from the city's trough. I get that. But what I'm not gonna do, Mr. President, is that anyone that wants to talk to me, we can have a difference of opinion, positions, I have no problem with that. I do take exceptions when we have to start calling one another names. I'm not gonna do that. But, but since I understand he's being engineered to say certain things, I want to make sure for the record, 'cause we getting into campaign season. Anyone that can, that can prove any of the allegations that he just said, I will shut my mouth on this day, period. But like I said yesterday, I went through a storm in two thousand thirteen, but it'll never happen again. I won't sit quiet everything I know at City Hall, including Mr. Meams. If you're getting favors over there at the crossplex, I'm gonna tell it. If you get whatever you getting out of City Hall, I'm going to tell it. And I want anyone to challenge me on that. I will not be quiet this time. The games that are being played up here, I don't like it. And, and just as I said before, this is why good people, Mr. President, opt to not be in politics, because I came up here to give the citizens good government. That's all I came to do. At the end of the day, all the other stuff is moot. But I can tell you this, if they wanna stage city ends, if they wanna start paying folk to say little things, that's fine. Except mine won't be a lie. In fact, it'll be proven. All right, thank you, Ms. President.
Next speaker.
Uh, is that Lyons?
Bondiria Lyons.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. I guess it's afternoon now.
Yeah.
My name is Bondiria Lyons. I reside at sixteen hundred Fifteenth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama. My zip code is three five two zero four. I'm on here today, um, well, let me say, good afternoon. Mayor Bill, he left. I wish he was here, because a lot of it is addressed to him and maybe Mr. Patton, you may be able to a- answer some of the questions. President Austin's, member of the council, elected officials, um, all citizens of Birmingham, as well as the citizens who's being neglected. Um, I come to you today about a particular issue, a home at sixteen thirty Fifteenth Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh four. It's actually about four or five doors from myself. This house has been burned some time now. I've been calling, neighbors been calling, everything. We have pictures of the home. The home, the structure is actually falling in now and it's falling onto the sidewalk. My concern is, school has started, kids may be walking in that area and they get hurt. I've made several phone calls three months ago, no return. I'm sure they didn't call me back, because my first name is not Doctor, um, Mayor, um, President, C E O, um, Mr. Patton, or whoever it may be. But I've called, I left a message in the mayor's office on Friday. I think maybe some people left early on Friday from City Hall. I called again. We've been calling about this structure for a long time now. Now they had start caving in. You have city workers that's going out working inspectors. Why haven't nobody seen this? There's shade somewhere. It's shading out area. It's not shade in places like Crestwood, Avondale, um, downtown Birmingham that y'all meticulously clean up and make sure it's clean. It's shaded over here in the black areas with zip codes three five two oh four.
Oh, you preach.
Well, people, we catch the bus to get where we wanna go. Our children's, our kids are educated in the public system and not the private sector. Um, we don't own business suits or business license, so our area has been grossly neglected. This home is a safety hazard. I finally talked, I came down here yesterday to personally see somebody, because I was tired of the pity pat, um, hide and go seek, shifting the blame. We hadn't got your call. Um, he's not in, he's in a meeting. I came on yesterday to speak some, to someone. Finally got in touch with a Mr. Willis. He had gone out, I had called him that morning and he looked at the problem. I told him it, it needed to be an emergency, because someone is gonna get hurt. Well, he told me that it'll be a process, it may be a week or so, um, and I talked with Mr. Bettis. "Oh, I didn't get your call. I'm sure you didn't get my call." Um, I left a message for him to call. So they tell me this house may be torn down, um, by the end of the week, next week. That's not good enough for the citizen of, um, Birmingham. That's not good enough for Fountain Heights. We want something done immediately. In the meantime, what's gonna happen to this structure? Is my son gonna be the fatality behind it? What, what are you all gonna do about it? I'm tired of, my vote should be my voice. I voted. The bail name has been the brain in my household for a long time now. It's no longer the brain. You all are not doing a service for the people who actually you want to vote. And one thing I do realize and recognize, now that it's election time, yeah, y'all cutting the grass. You know why you cutting it? 'Cause they want our vote. That's all we good for. You trying to pimp us for our vote. That's all we good for, is our vote. But once you get our vote, you don't come back to our areas to see how we're living, to see the injustice, but you make sure downtown is clean, you make sure, um, Dr. Dickerson, how your area look? Your area is very clean. In a meeting the other day with a lady, she laughed. They said, um, what air, what, what, what issues y'all have? We say our neighborhood houses dilapidated. She said, "Oh, I don't have that problem. I live on the south side." Really? Do they pay separate taxes, that mean? Can you tell me, is there a bucket where my tax dollars go? This three five two oh four, this three five two four four, whatever the situation is. Are we paying separate taxes or something? 'Cause we're not getting the same services. And from this one on, I am putting the mayor's office on notice. There's a new day. We're gonna respect that Ali's president, if he's not doing what he's supposed to do as president of our neighborhood, we're gonna get him out. We're not paying footsies anymore. We're not playing hide and go seek. We're not playing tag. We're not playing you, you, you in my power. I'm not in anybody's power, but the residents who's put me and voted for me to be vice president of my neighborhood. And those are the people whom my allegiance is to. So I wanna know here today, what are you gonna do about this home? And we're not gonna wait till next week to get it torn down.
Wow. Mr. Patton, do you have a response to that?
You, uh, spoke to Artemis Gordon?
Sir?
You spoke with Artemis?
Who was that?
Who did you speak to last week?
I, I-
Or this week?
I, I've left several notices with people, but I spoke to-
You spoke with someone that said that?
Willis on yesterday.
Okay, Willis.
Yes, sir.
The address is, what is the address? Sixteen thirty?
Sixteen thirty.
Fifteenth Avenue North.
Fifteenth Avenue North. But my concern too, Mr. Patton, is we, I have pictures here. We got so many homes that are falling in, not just burned, they're falling in all over Fountain Heights. Nobody's looking. There's shade over there. I don't understand why you can't see that. Why are y'all not concerned about our area like we are? You don't live like that. Why should we have to live like that? We pay taxes just like you do. And the very people that you all are pleasing and appeasing to are the people who do not even live in the city. And they come in here to work and when they get in their car, they're going over the mountain, behind the mountain, or under the ground, wherever. But they're not the very people who are even voting for these people who are in office. We're the ones, and we're the ones being disservice. And it's a new day. It's a new day in Fountain Heights. We coming every day, we coming every week, until we get results on a regular basis. Yeah, you all sent them over there to cut the grass, but guess what? They cut it like they ain't wanna be there, slaying stuff everywhere, throwing stuff. We come back, the grass goes, we cut it half cut. Paper still out. They cut all new paper, old paper. Then you pick paper up. We can't, we got a new recreation center, can't even get the grass cut on there until the mayor's come. Till somebody big person come, then you wanna cut the grass. Then I know it's, it's close to election. A lot of people don't realize what's going on. I realize you got a lot over there. The man gonna say, "Oh, I cut that lot two years ago, grass this high." Do we deserve that?
Mr. Patton, do you have, um, you, are you gonna?
Ms. Lovejoy.
Do you have someone that, that can meet with her today?
The name?
My name is Bondiria Lyons.
Okay.
Do you have someone that can talk to her?
I'll speak with her myself.
Okay, all right.
I want you to speak with me, but I'm here before you, because I want action. And I'm gonna give you the opportunity to do what you say you're gonna do, but I know this council has passed money, put money, L D I, put money for houses to be torn down in that area, and some of those same houses are still up. I wanna know where is that money? Where is that money? Why aren't some of those houses torn down? And I don't wanna be disrespectful to anybody, and I respect all of you all's position, but I'm tired as a citizen, I'm tired as a taxpayer, and my neighbors are suffering. They're tired of suffering, but guess what? A lot of people scared. They're, you know, a lot of people scared. And the ones that's not scared, they're cowards. They don't wanna come down here, because they feel like it's gonna be a retaliation. I don't care if there's a retaliation. My area has died and we want life again. And not only in Fountain Heights, ninety-nine neighborhoods deserve it as well. It's just not my area. It's all ninety-nine neighborhoods, 'cause those are the people you go to for votes. I'm not necessarily you, talking about you, because you're not an elect, you're official, but I'm talking about the mayor. Hey, we see you when you want our vote. But when L D I came through there, he came one time, he said what he say. But as a mayor and our leader, he didn't get with Fountain Heights and say, "Hey, this is my position on L D I. We don't want you to vote for this." You know what they wanted to do at first? They wanted to close Fountain Heights off. You know why? I realized, 'cause y'all letting that part of Fountain Heights go. People consider Fountain Heights have two different parts. They don't even know downtown Fountain. Like my son asked me, he said, "Mom, if that's Fountain Heights, why do downtown Fountain Heights look different than our Fountain Heights?" Explain that, Mr. Patton.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
I'll be happy to be with you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. You will?
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, and I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next speaker, uh, Lovejoy. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Jaquise Lovejoy. I stay at thirteen twenty-six Seventeenth Street North, three five two oh four. Hey, good afternoon to all y'all wonderful people.
Good afternoon.
I appear, I appear before you, asking you for compassion and resolution of my house and my neighborhood. Where is the help that is needed in a time of emergency? Where is the regular maintenance of a historic neighborhood so close to City Hall? The under-maintained and neglect of a historic neighborhood, Fountain Heights, in a city nicknamed the Magic City. There's nothing magical going on in my neighborhood, Fountain Heights. The city workers find creative ways to waste taxpayers' time doing nothing when they should be cutting down vacant lots. Yet, a two or three day job turns into a two or three week job. Yet, if my grass gets high due to the illness of myself or my children, I rapidly receive a notice prompting me to make a resolution of this offense. I recently become an owner of a historic house in Fountain Heights. After only owning my house for six months, two sh- two trees struck my house. One in the front and the other one on the backside. I have been contacting City Hall employees, one, Mr. Ronnie White, since February of two thousand and ten, about my house, my home, that is in need of critical repair. I've spoken to at least two nonprofit organizations, who said they're willing to do the work if the city would provide the paperwork and the funds. I asked for the paperwork. Mr. Ronnie White said he didn't know what he needed to give me. He asked me to call, yet he never returned my call. So what is a resident to really do, besides show up here at City Hall on a regular basis until I get a resolution? Thus, everything that I had to open my home business was ruined. A business that would have benefited my neighbors, providing affordable goods and a clothing pantry for those in need. Overall, my problem could be anybody's problems. It seems and appears, due to the lack of communication and compassion, this problem will persist until I prove that I will not go away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Patton, um, do we have someone from Community Development, Development that she could possibly talk to about that issue?
Yeah, we're gonna start right here with the gentleman right here. So if you would, if you would meet with him after the meeting, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker.
Cedric Hatcher.
Russid. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Councilor. My name is Cedric Hatcher. Uh, reside at twenty-three hundred Fifteenth Avenue North. Just for a moment, I ain't gonna tear it alone. Hey, y'all, about two weeks ago, I believe, a lot of y'all was out there in Philadelphia at the D M C convention. And I think a couple of y'all, Terry Sue and the mayor was out promoting, turning Kellygong Park into a historical, national park. Historical, national park, bro, Patton. Well, just a reminder, you know, that's all I am, is a messenger to remind someone. Just reminding what happened at that park while y'all was out there. Two young men walked up to your historical park y'all wanted to be and spray painted all over Dr. King's statue. And I know that statue might not mean something to y'all, but it mean a lot to Russid. A very iconic historical person, and it's still like that right now. When you get a chance, go down there and look at that brick. Probably cost twenty, thirty thousand dollars. Look at the damage it can cause. But we overlooked that. You know, when you stand here and kinda talk about race, you become a racist. I'm not a racist. I just live in reality. That's all I am. You know what I mean? I live in reality. And so if we was out there promoting and wanting to become a historical park, look what happened to the historical park. Look what happened, y'all. And all I'm out here to tell y'all today, y'all, we ain't gonna go back. We come this far by faith. And we don't wanna go back to where we came from. And you know what I mean? Ain't this something we all over again from Nashville here in Birmingham? With all this stuff, man, it's just enough is enough, y'all. Somebody gotta stand up. Are we blinded, because we too busy taking photo ops with Bentley, Billy and Bob? And we don't see what's going on right in our community? You know, we know race play a factor in Birmingham. If you don't think so, go downtown right now. And look how they building around Fourth Avenue, because race play a part in that. It sure do. Yeah, it play a part in that. Race truly play a part in what's taking place in Birmingham right now. You know, we come this far fifty years ago. Somebody remember nineteen sixty-three as old kids, march through the city of Birmingham? Chatted, "We ain't gonna let bull come tunnels around"? That's going on three months later. Remember June at Vivian Malone and Henry Graham stood in front of Alabama and tried to go in? And George Wallace said, "No, you ain't gonna come in here"? Remember they chatting, "We ain't gonna let George Wallace tunnels around"? We gonna keep on walking. We gonna keep on talking. Now here we are, in the twentieth century. I would hate to chat, "We ain't gonna let William Bell tunnels around". We gonna keep on walking. We gonna keep on talking. It's sad. All these black leaders, y'all. And look how we keep on being treated. Trampled over, stepped on, nothing being done. But when other people come in here, they don't have to stand in two minutes. It's yes, yes, everyone, yes, yes, give it to them. Whatever they want. And enough is somebody gotta speak out about it now, because it seem like hate coming out the heart. Now, in titles three, it ain't with three chapters. Chapter three and verse three. Paul said, "We once fought that hate, but the love of God came into our heart. It changed them." Some of us got to build a new heart, y'all. And David talked about it in the Psalm fifty-one and verse ten. He said, "Create me a clean heart, renew me in my spirit. Change the heart, you change the head." See, I can't laugh and smile with you, and I know you're kidding about me. No, 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 I ain't gonna be that kind of fool. You gonna buy me, you gonna make me bow down to your hated heart, because you give me a little money. Some of us will sell ourselves for a dollar bill, y'all. Or kiss the ground, some of us still walk on, y'all. Enough is enough. If you gonna step up in my clothing, what I'm gonna keep representing, vote for black people, you gonna step up like me. Huh? But I make you my councilor, I make you my president, I make you my mayor, all this kind of stuff, and you ain't studying me. And you see what we going through, our people going through. Less in the back, still in the back. And so don't forget, stay in minded, I'm in, I'm closing. Matthew twenty-four and Jacob can talk about it over there in chapter three. You know what I mean? Look what he said. He said, "Reminded of the times evil was gonna be all around, love was gonna wax cold, wars the room was a war. But two of the number one ways, he said, me I'm gonna deceive many." Two of the biggest groups in the world, I ain't telling all y'all, but I got a sign to say it. all of y'all, but I got a sign that said, "Number one is a politician. Number two is a pastor of a church." A politician take a pen and a piece of paper, a pastor take a scripture, take it out of context, especially with blacks, oh, we loving them, thanks. Oh, we want some good hoopla. Ha, 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 get out of here, get out of there. You don't know where you going, you don't know where you going, because you don't study. You don't search the scripture like John said. You know what I mean? David said, "Get out of the standard with all your getting. Get out of the standard, y'all." So let's be reminded. You know I was interviewed by Fox Six last week about what happened within that park. Now, Allen Collins is gonna tell me, Russ Ed, it was just a couple of skateboarders messing around. I said, "Hold on, what's the Collins? I've been asking how old was a couple of skateboarders?" He said, "One was nineteen, one was thirty-one." I said, "Ain't no couple of skateboarders messing around." I know Goodwood, they knew they were putting that plane all over. They knew that was Dr. King's statue. If you just messing around, why you go around railroad park and mess around? Why you gonna mess around? I'm gonna mess around this week. I'm gonna go down to Lear Theater, and I'm gonna write Russ Ed all over front of one. And I'm gonna see it, I'm gonna get forty-five days. They don't let me do, I'm gonna see what I just messed around. This young Russ Ed just fooling around. He's just a young skateboarder messing around. Now, ain't nobody speaking about that this week, about what happened in that park. The mayor ain't even saying nothing about it. Millie, he got power? That's why I'm kinda addressing it today, cause he got all the power. King Bill got all the power. But King Bill ain't speaking about what happened at park. I'm outta here.
Next speaker.
Willie Jenkins.
Jenkins, state your name. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Willie Jenkins, uh, Willie Jenkins. I'd like to, uh, announce to the city council and to the master manager, we are getting ready for the Carver High School picnic, October the first, at Carver High School. Ten to six P.M. want everybody to come out. Mister Parker, we'd like to come out to, to the annual Carver High School picnic. Also, we have, um, Miss, uh, Mental Pray will be at Saint Luke Baptist Church this coming Sunday, twenty-eight oh-one Twenty-first Avenue North. The Mental Pray will be there eleven o'clock and three o'clock. Invite all y'all, city council, to come. And also, um, my prayers go out to, uh, Linda Carolyn, uh, her husband, which is, uh, sang with the Temptation. He was a drummer, uh, played drums, and my prayers go out to Linda Carolyn. And, um, they been together a long time, and so my prayers go out to that family, to Linda Carolyn and her husband. And I would like to say, um, that, uh, yeah, William Parker, we do have, uh, Miss Barbara got something to give you. Uh, do you just get up, to get on the gentleman so we could come down here and get you, um, present your plaque to you. Barbara told me to tell you, just get us on the gentleman, and we would like to give your plaque to you and, and, and give it to you. And, uh, and I'd like to say, I did go to Mr. Mean, Arthur Mean's, um, bank, I mean, um, birthday, said he had a nice birthday celebrating, turned eighty years old. And my prayers go out to Mr. Mean and Mr. Mean, the band director at, uh, the mighty Carver High School. And I'm proud of Mr. Mean. He doing well. And I just wanna say, happy birthday, uh, uh, again to Mr. Arthur Mean. And, uh, we invite him to the, uh, picnic at the, um, Carver High School, uh, picnic, October the first at, uh, no, uh, at the Carver High School. And then I'm, I'm still a member of the, uh, Carver High School alumni. I am the chapter of the Carver alumni. And also, we have a lot, Mr. Patton, eighty-one, twenty-six Fifth Avenue North. And with Eastlake, we had a lot, a lot. My sister, though, it's just next door to us, the lot, it grow real bit, uh, tall. And, uh, uh, we want to, uh, say to, to cut it, it just grow a little long. It's next door to us. And, uh, that's the house next door to us. The lot grow real tall, the grass grow up real tall. And we stay on, uh, we, I stay eighty-one, twenty-four, and that's, um, eighty-one, twenty-six, uh, eighty-one, twenty-six Fifth Avenue North, over there in Eastlake, Mr. Patton. I just wanna let you know. Eighty-one, twenty-six Fifth Avenue North. It's staying, it's, the house is next door to us, over there in Eastlake, and the grass has grown up. The lot is a vacant lot, and the grass all grow, uh, the real back, in the back, uh, it grow up real tall and stuff. So I'd like to, so, letting you know, uh, so that's all I'd like to say, you know, uh, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My, David Williams.
What about the two bonding companies?
They're not, they, they left.
Okay. Mr. Van Williams?
Yes. Go, good afternoon. My name is David Van Williams. I live at forty-four twenty-nine, Forty-third Place North in the Engle Nook neighborhood. I'm the Engle Nook neighborhood pres, I'm the Engle Nook neighborhood secretary. And, um, I'm here today to talk about the Engle Nook neighborhood and, um, how the alleys are overgrown, um, some of the major streets entering into the neighborhood, um, grass is growing over the curve on the streets. These are main intersections coming into Engle Nook neighborhood. Um, so many things, the, uh, houses that needs to be torn down. There has been some houses torn down, but not enough. And, um, these things are suppressing the value, the property value of our homes in the Engle Nook community. And so, we really would like to have more attention given to beautifying our community, even when the, uh, park is cut every couple of weeks. Sometimes when it is cut, the grass is, uh, left and, left out to blow around, or when it is collected, the bags remain on the street. Uh, the grass was cut at the park on Saturday, but the bags are still there to this day. Um, the Engle Nook Neighborhood Association does support the, um, Kingston Fire Station being rebuilt, um, because it does support our community as well. Um, but I also would like to close with this. Um, I personally support the majority of the city council and the leadership of the majority of the city council. I went down to, um, Montgomery to oppose the changes to the Mayor Council Act, because I believe to have a strong legislative branch, even of my city government, or whether it's the federal government. So, uh, I would just like to say, I commend the, um, majority of leadership of the Birmingham City Council. I pray that y'all continue to stay strong and, um, make sure that the people of Birmingham, especially in North Birmingham, is not left out of the progress of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. We are, uh, Mr. Patton, you have a report from the mayor?
Yes, very briefly, uh, Mr. President. Uh, firefighter Lieutenant Andrew Johnson is still in the hospital. We're asking for everyone to lift him up, one, as one of our heroes in prayer. This Saturday, his family will join us at Regent's Field, and we really wanna be sure that we show him the love and support that the community has given him. Uh, Kim Rafferty is also involved in that event, so, uh, council, thanks so much for your support in that also. Uh, KBBG, B.C., I'm sorry, Key Birmingham Beauty Commission has recently teamed up with Stormwater Management. Uh, Ms. Denton, you wanna come real quick and show your loo, your new logo?
Good afternoon.
Mr. Patton, council, thank y'all very much. What we want to do, uh, we're going to have new signage that's going to be put up in the city of Birmingham. And the city of Birmingham Stormwater Management and KBB has combined forces to fight, uh, anti-littering, to promote recycling, and to waterfest protection. And we are going to be, and we are going to be hap, we're gonna put these signs around the gateways of the city and in the neighborhoods. But this is, uh, part of our initiative to, uh, promote environmental stewardship here in the city of Birmingham. And we thought that this was important to us, so we thought that it would be important enough to share with you all also.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patton.
Neighborhood residents of the city of Birmingham, uh, they're gonna be at s, series of town halls meetings, and we invite you to attend and participate over the next several weeks. A full ti, a full schedule will be available on birminghamar.gov, and the first meeting will be this Thursday at the Roosevelt Center Community Center at six P.M. We hope to see you there. That concludes our announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any councilor scales? Do we have, and you're, this is for the mayor?
Oh, absolutely.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. President. I, I wanna read something to Mr. Patton. I know Mr. Mayor's probably listening in the back. Had a sixteen-year-old girl, uh, who, uh, resident actually in District One, that sent me an email. Uh, there was, uh, uh, some apartments, there are a set of apartments on Sun Hill Road. I know, and I'm gonna ask Council Tyson, uh, to do this. I wanna declare, uh, ask for the mayor to consider declaring this property, um, a, a nuisance or a danger. Uh, there was a young woman, Mr. Patton, that was burned up, killed and burned up in these apartments on Sun Hill Road. I brought this before the council over a year ago. I know that, um, and it's across from Brown's Chapel AME or something like that, but it's right there on Sun Hill Road. Uh, I wanna thank Teresa Ragland, uh, for also making me aware of this. But I just wanna say this. Um, we've heard a lot of citizens complaining about various areas of the city. We got to start attending to these neighborhoods. And these apartments that I'm talking about, uh, is right there on Sun Hill Road, less than a block away from a fire station. And, and this young woman was killed and then burned in these set of apartments. It was on the news, as a matter of fact, on yesterday. Also came before this body, including the mayor, talking about Valley Brook Apartments. Mr. Richardson's son, which is a public works employee who is, uh, an investigator on behalf of the city, his stepson was killed in the same apartment complex that I too, and I'm asking for an emergency for that, Mr. Patton, uh, for that to be demolished. It has a file that is so thick. I've talked with, um, uh, Chief Roper about it, talked to Captain Treadaway. Uh, this young man, which is Mr. Richardson's stepson, was killed. He was shot twice in the eye and one in the head, and he died. His funeral was just last Saturday, okay? And I don't know why in the world that when we keep bringing these things to the attention of the mayor and his staff, why this stuff is not being looked at. And I'm telling my folks in my district, I, I can't speak for no other council member, but I'm telling them directly who to report to, cause Fire Station Eight is important, Kingston Lives Matter, and so do all of the city of Birmingham Lives Matter. It matters. And we've talked about these apartments. Uh, in fact, they had a fire last year, and it's boarded up, Mr. Patton. No renovations have been done, just boarded up. And so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, uh, that is the apartments on Sun Hill Road, uh, where at one time they were still in power, and now this young lady has been killed, and also, and then burned up in this set of apartments, and also Valley Brook Apartments, which this young man was shot, and then probably two months prior to then, in May, another young man was shot and died on the way to the hospital. So, if we can get you and the mayor's help on this, we'd appreciate it. We want both to be declared at emergency and be torn down. Not just closed, but torn down. And, uh, Mr. President, I have some more. I, I think I'm gonna probably wait, but I will say this as well. Um, I join even with your community in saying that, uh, there's some overgrowth. Um, school has started, and I think when we are talking about taking pride in your community, these young folk, they'll never have respect for communities that we see the litter and nobody gets it up. So, I'm asking respectfully, all the thoroughfares that lead to schools in District One, which I will provide for the mayor's office, I can name them off the top of my head, and I'm telling you, I'd like to have it respectfully cleaned along those main thoroughfares, uh, so that our students can have pride in the community and where they live. And so, I'm asking you to do that, Mr. Patton, respectfully. Again, those two set of apartments, we're asking for police, um, uh, to beef up, please, uh, as relates to, um, uh, the, um, the Echo Highlands, Huffman and Spring Lake communities, along with Apple Valley, especially being that we got Valley Brook Apartments in Apple Valley. I would certainly appreciate it. Uh, I think we have a neighborhood meeting this week, I'm not sure, but I'm gonna respect the time, Mr. President. Uh, and next week, with your permission, uh, we'll show the outcome of our seventh annual music and movie festival. I was very happy to see all the folk that I saw, uh, Mr. President. But I wanna say to my babies in District One and throughout the city of Birmingham, Mama Scales love you. You gonna have a great, blessed, fulfilled year and learn a whole lot. So, thank you, Lord, for letting these children be able to go back to school. One of my babies, Mr. President, was killed. His funeral was on, on, uh, Saturday. He was ten years old. He went to Huffman Academy, went to stay the summer with his dad, and was killed in Homewood. So, again, we share our love with the Huffman Academy family, most importantly, the young man's family, uh, where this, this, he was a victim of crime. So, nevertheless, thank you, Mr. President, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Alright. Um, you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I do. Some move.
Second?
Third, fourth.
Aye.
All opposed.
This meeting is adjourned.